Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, and this meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Slender, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Councillors Afghan.
Here.
Hmbo.
Here.
Wenlin.
Here.
Verdic.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
And Rapp.
Thank you very much. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start our meeting today with a few proclamations and presentations. And first is the celebration of Nooruz. So today, we acknowledge a tradition that spans centuries, a festival that embodies renewal, hope, and unity, Nooruz, which is the Persian New Year. Nooruz, meaning New Day, is a time of rebirth, making the arrival of spring and the triumph of light over darkness. And I've asked councillor Afghan, our favorite Persian, other than a Persian oak, to read the proclamation. Councillor Afghan.
Whereas Nooruz, a festival which originated in Iran, religion of Zarastrians, over 3,000 years ago, is rooted in the tradition of Iranian people and has spread to other countries in the regions of Western Asia, Central Asia, the Black Sea Basin, South Asia, Balkans, and even to our community with the many immigrants who have come to live in the city of Lake Oswego. And whereas to those observing Nooruz, may this new year bring you and your loved ones joy and endless possibilities. May your homes be filled with laughter, your hearts with love, and your paths with prosperity. And whereas, let us embrace the spirit of Nooruz by fostering peace, spreading kindness, and renewing our commitment to each other as neighbors and friends. Now therefore, bid resolve that we, the Lake Oswego City Council, proclaim March 21st, 2025, to be the day of Nooruz, Persian New Year in Lake Oswego, and encourage all to recognize this day as a cherished festival that enriches our community and strengthens our bonds. Nooruz Mubarak.
Mr. Mubarak. Thank you, councillor Afghan. Lake Oswego is blessed to have a strong Persian community, and we are grateful to councillor Afghan for bringing that proclamation forward. We also celebrate Arbor Month, and for 36 years, the city of Lake Oswego has earned the Tree City USA designation from the National Arbor Day Foundation for demonstrating a strong commitment to managing and caring for trees. Arbor Day is America's national tree holiday, observed on the last Friday of April to celebrate the role of trees in our lives and to promote tree planting and care. But here in Lake Oswego, we celebrate the entire month of April as Arbor Month. We will not be undone. A variety of events and activities have been organized by the city's planning and parks and recreation departments, the Sustainability Advisory Board, the Lake Oswego Public Library, Oswego Lake Watershed Council, and Friends of Tryon Creek. So be on the lookout for the April Hello LO. Inside, you will find the annual Urban and Community Forestry Newsletter that contains details about Arbor Month events, urban and community forest workshops that will be held throughout the year, and much more. So information will be available on the city's website as well by the end of this month. And a few of the highlights include free workshops we'll be putting on demonstrating tree pruning and tree planting. There's also a Trees Are For The Birds themed art contest, an annual tradition that we do for kindergarten through 5th grade students, an Oregon White Oak Arborist presentation and film screening at the Lake Theater and Cafe. We'll have a paper-making craft for kids at the public library, and there'll be stewardship, work parties, and many other events. So keep an eye on the city's social media platforms for fun videos that were created by our very own park rangers, exploring the tree of the week every week in April. I can't wait to see what tree will be next. So we hope you participate in one of these many amazing events, and we'll have the signed proclamation on our city website. And we are also celebrating LO Reads 2025. So I'm going to ask Director Kelly to come on forward and talk to us about this year's LO Reads book, How to Read a Book. Instructions, critical. This should have been the first book, probably.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Director.
Thank you, Mayor Buck. City councillor, city manager, and staff, I'm Melissa Kelly, the library director here for our Lake Oswego Public Library, and I'm delighted to speak with you today about our upcoming Lake Oswego Reads celebration throughout the month of April. And this year, the committee selected How to Read a Book. Thank you, Mayor, for showing that book, which, contrary to its title, is a novel. I've been joking about that a lot this year. And I'm here today in place of Nancy Nyland, our volunteer and special events coordinator at the library, who does an amazing job coordinating Lake Oswego Reads and who wishes she could be here today, too. But I'm glad to be here with you. We're very excited about the selection for the 19th Annual Citywide Community Reading Program. And this novel is an unsparingly honest and profoundly hopeful story about letting go of guilt, seizing second chances, and the power of books to change our lives. With the heart, wit, grace, and depth of understanding that has characterized her work, author Monica Wood illuminates the decisions that define a life and the kindnesses that make life worth living. We're very thankful to the Friends of the Library for providing 800 complimentary copies of How to Read a Book and that have been distributed to the community. We've also distributed an events brochure and passport, and I'm so grateful to the Lake Oswego Review as well for their continued partnership to provide the printed brochure inside of the LO Monthly Magazine and for securing local business support for the program. We will have a full month of events, as we always do, throughout the month of April with our culminating Author Event on May 1st. We have 32 events this year, to be exact. As always, there will be an array of programs that appeal to all ages and a variety of interests. And one of the highlights each year of Lake Oswego Reads Month is the LO Reads Art Show that'll be held on the evening of Monday, April 7th, at the Lakewood Center for the Arts. And thanks to our newly sung hero, Jan Rimmerman, we'll be featuring art in all types of formats at the art show, from 21 professional artists who have read the novel and interpreted it through their art. All pieces are for sale and will remain hanging at Lakewood Center until May 2nd, where the exhibit will come to the Lake Oswego Library. And as a reminder, all of the artists help to transport the art to public libraries throughout the state so that we can share this amazing art in the program with other communities as well. This is an all-volunteer effort, and we're really grateful to all of those artists and Jan for their continued generosity. We have many programs throughout the month, including some really fun events that you can participate in, including our First Tuesday Music, featuring local legend Marimba Mike. We're also featuring book sculptures by Melody Bush. We'll have a display of her work, and she'll teach us how to create book sculptures, and then give one away to a lucky winner during our book swap at the Celebration of Books. And that's on Saturday, April 5th. We also have our trivia night later in the month, and that will highlight themes from the book. So get a team going and come and try and win some prizes there, too. We also have many book discussions throughout the month for all ages, and we'll host a variety of opportunities to discuss those with librarians. These are just a few of the book discussions that we have on the calendar this year. We also have many community collaborations. Some of them are highlighted here on the screen. We love to collaborate on events. That's a favorite aspect of LO Reads, both within and beyond our community. In addition to the incredible financial support from so many, we're also hosting events with the AAUW, the American Association of University Women, Lakewood Center Associates, Oswego Heritage Council, Lake Theater and Cafe, and the Parks and Recreation Department here at the city. Thanks to that partnership with Parks and Rec, West Willuga Park will host our Family Story Walk for the month of April, which is I Am a Story by Dan Yaccarino. And speaking of children's activities, that's another popular area of programming that's been growing in recent years, is our youth component, in addition to the traditional adult-focused events. This year, our wonderful youth services team selected the aptly titled How to Read a Book by Kwame Alexander and illustrated by Melissa Sweet. This beautiful picture book highlights the joys of reading, and it will be read aloud to families on Saturday, April 12th, followed by a giveaway of 100 copies. So definitely put that on your calendar. Thanks again to the Friends of the Library for helping us give those books away. We'll also have an art bar up all month and a fun paper-making project, as was mentioned, in collaboration with Arbor Day Events, and that's taking place April 11th. There are so many ways to participate throughout the month, in addition to attending lectures and book discussions and the other events that we talked about. That calendar of events is featured on the back of our passport, along with extra credit opportunities, and again, highlighted in the LO Monthly section about Lake Oswego Reads. And three credits on the passport may be turned in for a chance to win a gift basket, courtesy of our Library Advisory Board. The drawing will be held at the May 1st Author Event, featuring our author, Monica Wood. Monica Wood will speak to our community that Thursday evening at Lake Ridge High School. And there's also an opportunity for the community to submit questions for the author online. So please take every advantage of that. The event is free and open to the public, though a ticket is required, and those will be available at the library starting April 1st. So please stay tuned for all of the information about Lake Oswego Reads. You can sign up for some of the programs that have a limited capacity, and please follow us on Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, and at our website, lakeoswigoreads.org. And again, our passports and brochure are available at the library and available to download on our website. Again, we're so grateful for our sponsors that help us make this program possible each year. Again, we're celebrating our 19th year in 2025. And this program is presented by the Lake Oswego Public Library and the city of Lake Oswego, sponsored by the Friends of the Lake Oswego Public Library, the Lake Oswego Review, the Lake Oswego Rotary Club, and the Lakewood Center for the Arts. And we're also fortunate to have received contributions and support from many other local businesses and groups, and we're so grateful. We hope you'll join us for at least one of our Lake Oswego Reads programs during April and our Author Event on May 1st. I just want to thank you again for your time today, your support of the library and of this wonderful program, and I want to also just give a shout out to Nancy Nyland and the volunteer committee for all of their work to put all of this together for us. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Kelly. Yeah, to keep a program like this going for now almost two decades is quite a feat, and there's a lot of work that goes into this. Obviously, it does not run itself, and so thanks to you and the library community, especially and all the community supporters and volunteers who I know work very tirelessly on a volunteer basis to put all these great events together and to bring the community together for this great program. And a special thanks to the Friends of the Lake Oswego Public Library as well, who run the bookstore downstairs and the one in Mountain Park and really exists to fund, basically, this program. So if you're not a friend of the public library, you can become a friend by going to their website and joining. It's very cheap.
Yes, and it makes a huge difference. Thank you.
It makes a huge difference. So if you enjoy these events, become a friend of the Lake Oswego Public Library. It's a good thing to do, colleagues. We should all be friends. All right. Thank you, Director Kelly.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment. I have a few folks who have signed up, but if you are here and would like to provide public comment, this is separate from the public hearings that we have on the agenda, so just public comment on things that aren't on the agenda. There's a white form in the back of the room. Go ahead and fill that out and hand it to Ms. Slender here. But Sheri Dupree, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes, and we look forward to hearing from you. And just start by telling us your name. You don't give us your address or anything. Just tell us.
I'm Sheri Dupree, 511 Foothills Road.
You don't have to give us your... Okay.
As an adult, I learned my father was African-American, passing his white. I grew up in a white community with all the advantages that that possesses, but I wondered at the cost to my father. I've been attending city council meetings intermittently since I came to LO in 2017, and I have delighted in the intelligence shown in the discussions, in your priorities, in your openness to public comment, and in the way you work together. But I grimace when I hear inclusion mentioned as a partisan issue instead of simple humanity, or when a councillor wonders if inclusion should continue to be a goal when there are so many needs in this community. Maybe you can understand my grimace, given my background. My dad stayed hidden. He was the man everyone loved because he always had a joke and he was never controversial. He couldn't afford to have people look at him too carefully. So people in that community would probably say he was happy, but I wonder how he could have flowered if he didn't have to keep his identity hidden. We all know the future demographic estimates. Although Oregon is one of the least diverse states in the Union, there will be a marked increase in diversity in terms of ethnicity and race in each decade projected. These changes are coming to LO also. People of color I know in LO find community outside of our city, although they do live here, which makes me wonder about their ability to be an important part of our community. I know your efforts have come far since 2017. I've watched it. There's the Equity Program Manager, DEI Advisory Committee with Diversity Training for City Employees. There are city-backed festivals. Willie's picture is on the side of this building. Parks and Rec have been amazing in their outreach, but I don't want your continued efforts to, in any way, be like the dynamics of an abusive marriage where the man says, "I bought you a new car." Most wives don't get that. Now shut up. DEI efforts have to come from the bottom up, not the top down. Asking people of color if they can be their true selves in LO is the real starting question for me, as we start, as we look toward using the talents of people of color to better our community. Finding ways to learn the answer to that question should be the most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dupree. Jeff Goodman.
Good to see you. And good to see all of you in your free time. If you are looking for a wonderful poet to read, I recommend Omar Kayyam from Persia, author of The Rubiot, and also a tent maker in his time. So wonderful poetry. I am here today representing the Oswego Heritage Council to extend an invitation to all of you and to all who are listening to attend the new exhibit at the Oswego Heritage Council. We are part of a group that is commemorating 50 years of Vietnamese culture in Oregon, along with the Oregon Historical Society and the Jeffrey Allen Gallery in Tigard. The Vietnamese-American community in Portland will be commemorating a very profound milestone this year, 50 years since the beginning of a new chapter for many Vietnamese immigrants in America, and that's April 30th in 2025 celebration. This moment symbolizes a half-century of resilience, growth, and contributions to our city's vibrant culture and indeed, the region's vibrant culture. And to honor this legacy, we are inviting you to this exhibition, which will be opening on April 5th. It is curated by the Vietnamese Cultural Arts Alliance and is told through the eyes of one local Vietnamese refugee. The next two sections after the Oswego Heritage Council exhibit will be at the Oregon Historical Society and then subsequently at the Jeffrey Allen Gallery. It will begin on April 5th at our own Oswego Heritage Council with an exhibit called The Story Begins. This exhibition will capture the perspective of a Vietnamese immigrant artist, reflecting on a pivotal moment in his life, transitioning from the familiarity of his home just six months prior to navigating to a new country. This collection of art is one experience through the eyes of a Vietnamese man coming to America after the end of the war. I hope that you and all residents in Lake Oswego have the opportunity to come and visit this exhibit. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Yes, your Catherine was nice enough to invite me down to meet with Allen and the two daughters of the artist, and they were starting to hang the exhibit, and it looks wonderful. I think it's going to be fantastic, and I appreciate the heritage.
Look forward to seeing you there.
Bringing it here to town. Oh, yeah. I'll be there.
Thank you.
Opening night. Thanks. Diane Cassidy. Yeah, it's a cool thing. Paint it big. Hi, Ms. Cassidy.
I'm Diane Cassidy. I've lived in Lake Oswego for probably 48, 49 years. I came last meeting to talk about your 2025 goals, several of which I objected to. But when I got home, I just, there's a couple of them that just still stick in my craw, and I just have to talk about them. The goal about attracting and supporting a diverse population is upsetting to me. It is not for you, any of you, to decide who should live or work here. You cannot state a preference about what residents look like, what color of skin they should have, their age, their income level, or anything, really. Redlining was made illegal in the 1960s. It is not up to you to have a preferences about those you serve, only that you serve them all the same. The diversity nonsense shows up in the city's recruiting, hiring, and advancement processes. You should only be hiring the best at whatever the job requires. Discrimination in any form is wrong. It is also illegal. It is an insidious evil that has been creeping into our society, pretending to be a virtue. Evil prospers as long as the majority white population is on the receiving end of the negative bias. We aren't supposed to complain. Lake Oswego should not fall into this trap. The goal, this goal and other city policies like it should be eliminated. The second thing is to ensure a safe and secure, prepared community. There is no assurance or trust in you or anyone in City Hall if you persist in allowing the city to be a sanctuary city. Regardless of what the city and state statutes say, federal laws are supreme and take precedence. You swore an oath to that principle. When a city, state, or government official is allowed to pick and choose which laws to follow, citizens cannot trust their government to be fair or to keep them safe. Two recent executive orders, not the third topic, but confirm that females are entitled to safety and security in intimate spaces by providing single-sex restrooms and locker rooms in public spaces. It is incumbent upon Lake Oswego to ensure safety and security, along with dignity and respect for its female citizens. If the Lake Oswego School District is partner at the new pool, the city may be forced to do what they should be doing anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm kind of passing on. My name is Sylvia Drill. I've been a resident for 41 years down on South Shore Boulevard. I have been requested by my son to bring up, since it's going to be Arbor Month, especially invasive species that are killing our trees. So many trees, as you walk around or drive around, have all these vines going up the trees, and they kill them. Why is it that the Invasive Species Act, to eliminate them from private property and from public property, is not happening? And what can we do about it? Is there a coalition? Is there a group that does that? It's sad to see so many of the trees, especially on South Shore, that have been badly damaged. They get weakened by all of that. And then there's also the invasive weeds that overtake natural natives. And so that was really kind of a question that he has had and we have discussed frequently. Is there a way that we, is there a group that does that? So, thank you.
Thank you, yes. Just as a quick, there's good information on the city website in terms of what the community does, how the city invests in invasive removal, but one big and beneficial program is the stewardship program, and there's kind of groups that have adopted all the various natural areas, and they will go and have parties specifically to remove the invasive species off the trees, and they're good things to be involved in. There's certainly a lot of work to be done in that regard. Thank you.
Is there an ordinance where households need to take care of their trees that way?
We can't get into that here right now, but we can connect you with more information.
Yeah, that would be great to know.
Yeah, thank you very much, ma'am. Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like? That was my last card. Anyone else here to provide public comment? Okay. Thank you, everyone who spoke. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, and on the Consent Agenda is Item 6.1, which approves the work plans for the 2025 City Council Goals and Initiatives. Item 6.2, which is Ordinance 2956, is an ordinance of the city council amending LOC Chapter 20 licenses to establish an additional recycling collection services license. And we have Item 6.3, which is an IGA with Clackamas County for the Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Move to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, motion made by... All right, motion made by Councilor Boopin, seconded by Councilor Verdic. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes 7-0. Okay. Now going on to council business, our first item is item 8.1. This is revisiting of AP 24-05. As a reminder, we have closed the public hearing on this matter, but we had continued our deliberations to consider one particular tree in the public right of way, our future public right of way. And so we are here to, Director Rooney went forth and took a deeper dive and is back with her findings and. Good to have you. I feel like that, if someone, that chair is so, I felt so bad for everyone, so almost to the ground. I mean, if you want, unless you like it that way.
I'm subordinate to Eric.
Sorry, so sorry.
Torture chair.
Sit down a little bit, there we go. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Councilors. So we are here this afternoon, it's a, to finish the tree appeal, is there anything we need to do legislatively on that?
No, this is just a continuation of, as the mayor said, the council deliberations and pursuant to your request, they answered questions for you all about the city engineer's determination about the alley width and then looked into your further questions about the, the tree and whether or not, given the city engineer's determination, that it was possible to save the tree. And so you have a memo that describes all of that. And as Council Raff just reminded me, he will recuse himself from both the deliberations and the vote since he was not here at the first.
Right, thank you. And so, yeah, basically, as you saw in the council report that we provided, a lot of the information regarding what was already in the, the record from the previous applications and then, or permits. And then there was, the second half of it talks quite a bit about where we get our standards from regarding the alley standards, the 25, the 20-foot, excuse me, width. And then kind of at the end of the day, the actual reality is, and it's well shown on this particular diagram, let me see, yeah, is that the center of the tree is right there. There is a protection zone that is required that if we were to try and put this alley in at all, it would basically affect and impact the roots and the chances, if I had the right exact words from the arborist, the chances of the, the tree living are quite, quite slim, if at all, because of the fact that any road on top of the roots, no matter what the width was, would, would have a negative impact. So it's, that's the, that's the simple, you know, physical facts of it, but we did provide all of the background information about where we get our standards from and why we want the 20-foot alleyway fully improved. The fact that it does match the other alleys in the rest of the neighborhood, that's what we ask for when we have new development. So consistency. So any questions with that or is there anything else I might have missed?
No, that's about it. So the maximum disturbance for the tree protection zone is 25%. With the existing disturbance for the tree protection zone, the amount that we would be able to disturb and the resulting alleyway width would be about nine and a half feet wide, which would not meet the fire code or engineering design standards for alleyway, for access along the alleyway. And there's no guarantee even with that, that we would be able to resultingly save the tree. So that was the finding that we, after reviewing the record, were able to determine.
Does anyone have any questions? Council Raff.
Director, the tree protection that we're talking about, does it have to be on the alley side or only on the construction side?
Well, yeah, I'll let you do that on tree protection.
Tree protection area is this entire, oh God.
Yeah, it's a little wild.
Got to use my right hand. The tree protection zone is this entire surrounding area.
Okay.
And it's one foot for every inch diameter that a tree DBH is. So we look at protecting that entire surrounding area. And the result for impacts is going to be on both sides of the tree.
Maybe I don't understand the protection part of this. Is the grade going to be different than existing grade?
Yes, there is a 10-inch grade change.
One inch?
10-inch.
10-inch. That changes things.
Yes.
Yeah. You have a question? Councilor.
Yes, I was having, nod.
From, from my, from my experience is that you can change up to two inches without impacting the roots and the tree. And you can do that every year, every two years, but for this development, I think 10 inches over a period of time would be too long.
And I will say, I hate to interrupt, but in fairness to the process, I'm not sure that Councilor Afkan's comments are in the record, so I would instruct all of you.
No, yeah, too.
To make your decision based on what is in the record, including Councilor Afkan.
Yeah, no, and my question, like you said, is simple. Is there any technical way we can save this tree? Because a hemlock can live 800 years, that's all I am saying. Is there any way, like without, without pushing it, you know, like violating the code or anything, you know? There like any way, because I'm not a technician, I don't even.
So using the information that we have in the record, the resulting alleyway width, if we were to follow tree protection best practices, according to the arborist report in the record, we would result in a nine and a half foot alleyway. So the question after that is, is a nine and a half alleyway width acceptable to development code and engineering standards and fire code? And then that would.
Yeah, and of course, the answer is no to that. I mean, what's difficult here is the fact that the construction alone is going to impact, if you will, that, that red area. And I don't want to get too much new news into the record, but is that a guarantee that the tree would live? We can't guarantee that.
But there's no way like to go around, like just, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm just.
This is, this is where the alley would be, is over here. And this would be untouched, if you will, but would it survive? I don't know, because there are still roots out in here. And we would be impacting this area with a nine and a half foot wide alley, which is not adequate according to our standards.
Okay. Thank you for coming back to us with this additional information. Would someone like to propose a motion? For Councilor Raff. Maybe after we make the motion.
Procedurally, we make the motion and then we can discuss?
Yes.
I, I want to make a motion.
Okay.
It would be option, like, because I will discuss why. My motion is to move to tentatively reverse the commission's decision and deny the tree remover, no, uh, no. Yeah, option one, move to tentatively affirm the commission's decision to approve the tree remover application 499-240018443 with condition of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councilor Boopin, seconded by.
Mayor Buck. The motion should also include a direct staff to present findings at the April 1st meeting.
Oh, yes. Is it okay if we add that Councilor Boopin direct staff to provide, present findings, conclusions, and order finalizing the tentative decision on April 1st, 2025?
Yes.
Yes, good, okay, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Slender. Okay, discussion. Councilor, do you want to go first?
Yeah, you know, the discussion I was saying is honestly, I, like, we should save, for me, we work hard, all of us, to save this tree, but when our engineers say that, first of all, it's illegal even to go that route. And even if we went that route, we're not sure. The arboretis said, maybe the tree will die. So like the right thing is just to stick to the, the decision. Mission, just.
Okay.
Very sad, but I mean, that's.
Comment, Councilor Raff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'm thinking if we asked the question differently, would we get a different answer? For example, we want the developer and our engineering department to save that tree. What does it take? Would we get a different answer?
I think we heard it was a small alley that would not meet the fire code.
When I envisioned this tree and its canopy, I struggle with seeing how we're blocking the alley with its canopy. That makes sense?
It's the canopy, it's.
So what is, what is blocking the access, the full 20 feet access, when the tree is at the property line? And we have 20 feet?
It's the roots. The driving over the roots will kill it. When you drive over roots long enough and with enough machinery and with enough weight, it will, will kill the tree.
Okay.
It's, it's not the canopy itself, it's the roots that we'd be driving on or the roots that we would be cutting into to build the alley. That's what would cause damage to the tree, both short term and long term.
And our forecast is that the traffic there is going to increase, therefore it's going to damage the tree roots. Is it?
I believe what the record reflected was that the anticipated traffic would be garbage trucks, but I know Ms. Sims is more familiar with the record. So in addition to garbage trucks, were there, was there ever evidence?
General cars as well as fire access, emergency access. So that's.
Was there anything in the record about construction vehicle activity?
As part of the construction of the site, there will be construction vehicle activity, of course.
Thank you for answering that question. Mr. Mayor, my thinking is that if the tree is going to die, let me see it die before we cut it down.
Pull it out of the house. All right, any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. We'll call the roll. Thanks, Ms. Slender.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Councilor Afkan?
No.
Councilor Boop?
No.
Councilor Wenlin? Councilor Verdic?
Yes.
Councilor Corrigan?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-2.
Thank you very much.
With Councilor Raff Epstein.
Yes, with Councilor Raff Epstein, thank you. And I didn't want to say this because it's not in the record. I, I was talking to an arborist earlier today, was looking at doing like a safety assessment on a neighbor's tree, someone that works in the community, and he didn't know my position in the community. And he just commented on how the, the tree protection has become such much more important recently than how back in the 90s, really, it used to be like there was tree protection sort of, but not really. And so, so many of the trees, in fact, many of the trees, he had a chance to analyze many of the trees that fell down in the last storm. And he said a lot of those roots had grown one of two different diseases that grow on roots because of the impacts of development. And that was from a less, less strenuous and stringent tree, tree protections, you know, back at those times when there was that development. And so it was kudos, you know, really to the team at the city. They, he said, oh, Lake Oswego, they are very stringent about these tree protections, making sure that when we do save a tree, it is being protected so that it's not negatively impacted by the development, maybe to survive a matter of years, but then to fall down from rot, you know, some years later. And he also just mentioned how stringent in general Lake Oswego is about saving certain trees when they really do not need to come down and how, he said, in, in recent years, the staff has been very, very careful to ensure that any tree that really can be saved with the development, and he was mentioning how, how close even development is coming to trees, which he never used to see before. So anyway, those are just, you know, off the cuff comments he made to me as an experience of, of, of an arborist that works in the community. So I thought, anyway, good job to the city team and it seems like, and the work that's in line with the, the values of the community here. Thank you. Okay. Next, Ms. Thising. Are you in here? I'll wind them back. Legislative update. Love that we get to call you a deputy. That's great. It's a great title.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Madison Thising. I am now the Deputy City Manager for the City of Lake Oswego. Tonight, I am here to give you an update on the legislative session. We are roughly a third of the way completed and we are quickly approaching our first deadline. That is this Friday, March 21st will be that bills need to be posted to a committee agenda by that day. This is especially important because right now we are over 3,000 bills, which I just heard from our league hall on Friday, which is the most we've been at this point in time to date. That really shows the sheer volume that they're working through. Why that's important, especially for Friday, is there's a lot of bills that might just simply drop off because they haven't been placed on an agenda yet. Following that March 31st date being Friday, is then March, or excuse me, April 9th, so before I come back to see you, will be then the first chamber work session line, which means the committee must have had a vote on those bills. After that, they would be effectively dead. And at this point, because of the mass volume of bills that are happening, they simply might not get scheduled. One of the, the conversations that the league especially been having for the technical bills that are related to housing, they are still being drafted and amended and there just might not be enough time to get those through, which in some ways you could argue is a strategy for us. If we have enough comments that they are still being workshopped, if you will, they could simply just die before they even get to an agenda, which would be, which I can get, I will get to next, is just the amount of sheer housing bills that we're up against right now. For today, I'm specifically going to be talking about recreational immunity, housing, and then the unemployment benefits for strike employees. So that was just a landscape of where we are today. Again, we're, we're not even a third of the way done and yet there's a huge volume of bills going forth. Good news, though, right off the bat, so first thing I wanted to talk about was recreational immunity. That did pass in the Senate unanimously last week. It's moving on to the House, there should be no concerns. If you remember, this was one of our top priorities this session and we are feeling confident. I've also been in touch with Representative Wen's office about this bill and they have our testimony that we previously submitted for this. So right now, no concerns and we just hope that moves forward. The second thing I wanted to briefly talk about was housing. As shared housing bills are moving at a rapid speed, it's not just the governor's housing bill, but there's a few technical ones related to shot clocks, preemptions, and design standards that are required. I will follow up with the, an email listing those, just because, one, I'm not very good at repeating all the numbers, but also it's such an exhaustive list. One of them had, a batch of them had a hearing on Monday, so we'll be submitting testimony tonight. I need to work on that. So I will send that via council email. The league has been, as, as they continue to have done a great job getting the cities organized, but also providing letters of opportunity for us to sign on to. So there's been few that we have had, the Lake Oswego's letter, as in Mayor Buck has been able to sign on, but then we've also been signing on to the league's letters for many of these as well. Also, we've had our staff be on the technical side of providing comments. And again, a strategy, if you will, is that we are providing so many comments for changes in these bills that they might just die because they don't have time to work through. The last thing I did want to touch on, which was one that we haven't yet talked about, but I think Mayor Buck might have mentioned it a few weeks ago, was the Senate Bill 916, which is the unemployment benefits for striking employees. That bill allows striking employees to receive unemployment benefits after two weeks from being away from their jobs. This is especially relevant to. This is especially relevant to cities, but also all public entities right now, as we're facing budget challenges and budget, budget, budget concerns, is part of the bargaining process and negotiations for labor unions, is that eventually people come back to the table when they need to. But the idea is if we are offering unemployment benefits for those who are striking, they not, might not come back to the table. And so what does that mean for us? Is if we have employees who are striking and are collecting unemployment, we, they might be on strike for a longer period of time, which means that we can't stop city services, so we potentially would have to be bringing in temporary staff or more additional support. So that is a budget concern. I think this is especially relevant right now with the school district, so I'm actually going to be reaching out to their staff contact, who has been watching this bill, but now that it's gaining support in the Senate to actually pass, we do have concerns with this. So, like I said, I know Mayor Buck brought it up a couple of weeks ago, has been in contact with our representatives, but it's looking that now we need to be pushing more into the House because it most likely will be passing out of Senate. So those are the three big buckets that I just wanted to touch on today. I will be back at the end of next month with hopefully some good news, at least, after this first deadline of things moving forward.
Do you want to fill in some of the, color in the lines a little bit on some of the housing bills? I mean, I think there, there are some things that are of deep concern, like the 45-day shot clock on building permit applications, requiring standard building permits for housings be approved, so any design standards or variations that we might have in the community would be lost. I mean, I think there's quite a lot. So do you want to fill, color in the lines a little?
A little bit more, yes. So right now, through the planning process, we are, have state, state law mandates of how quickly we need to pass through permits. There's a time requirement. This is now moving into the engineering review of those, those design and standards. So as Martha shared, it is a shot clock. Right now, our concern is we just wouldn't be able to do it fast enough. And we have a very, I will commend our team, we move permits very quickly. There, there's not, there's, there's literally no more time than what we currently have. And this would actually cause not only just concern, but we just wouldn't be able to. And then there could be consequences to that. I don't believe the bill, I'd have to go back and check if there, if that then, if we aren't in compliance, it goes to Hapo, but that, we, the last session, they created the whole oversight committee through Hapo, which is the Housing Accountability and Production Office. So if that, if that was to move forward, or excuse me, if these bills were to move forward as in, at the shot clock, and if we're not, not complying, if you will, what would be then the ramifications of that? And then Martha's correct, that there are some building design standards that are being drafted, that if you are coming into a city, you could, they are approved by the state. And so, no matter the, the circumstances of your local community, those are approved designs.
Yeah, a lot of big concerns. Plus the, plus it was the, our inability to require, you know, to exact on the public improvements.
Yeah. So I'm gonna follow up via email with all these, there's, like I said, I'm not always the best at remembering the numbers exactly. And so, I'm gonna put this in a summary, so that you all have it front and center via email as a follow-up. As well as our testimony letters, once they're submitted.
One thing on all this housing changes, if it goes through, it's going to limit our ability to save trees. Period. I mean, citizens in Lake Oswego should be very concerned about this, because the state is making the rules now. And so, I know we just had an appeal on a tree, and there's some of you that care deeply about trees, but pretty soon, Salem is going to take away our right to make local decisions, and tree appeals will be no longer even an option for the community, just because of the new statutes. And they're moving at a rapid pace of changing housing laws in Oregon. And it's all coming from the top, shoved down our throats. So, just for everybody to know, it's a good time to write both your senator and your representative to say, back off on housing, let the locals do what the locals do. So anyway, just food for thought.
Yeah.
A follow-up on that, also with the shot clocks, some of the processes that we have, being appeals, private hearings, some of those would have to just be removed by, based off of the time.
Well, let us know what, you know, what else we can do. I mean, I know that between the cities, the League, Metro Mayors, I mean, everyone's advocating on the same, on all these topics. I just don't know if it's getting through, because we haven't seen, I'm surprised they haven't produced the amendments yet.
Is our senator for the strike bill supporting that?
I don't think he's a sponsor. Oh, did get voted out of the Senate.
Did get voted out of the Senate, right? Yeah.
Well, the thing on the, the strike bill too, I mean, all of Madison's points were spot on, it's, it's also that the local, local governments pay dollar for dollar for the benefits. They're not paying into the, into the, into the fund.
No.
They're actually paying out the benefits. So on top of paying for replacement workers, it would, it would severely limit school districts, local governments, it could have a huge budget impact. Now, they assume that it's not going to change behaviors at all, but that's, you know, yeah, I know.
And it's going to affect the private world. And so the unfortunate thing is, companies are not going to invest in Oregon, they're gonna bypass.
I, as I understand too, we would be the only state that provides this for, for private. No, there's a couple, but it's on the, on the private side, but that no other state has this provision for public employees.
Correct, right.
At first. Trailblazers. Great. Okay. Any other questions, Madison? Did you have any, anything else? No. Thank you very much for all the tracking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Okay, let's see. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing on Resolution 24-29 and Ordinance 2931. These are both in regards to fees and minimum insurance limits for utilities operating in the right-of-way, and then clarifying and improving definitions, licensing, and reporting requirements, and the enforcement process regarding utility providers using the right-of-way. We will start by a review of the hearing procedure by Ms. Osneck.
Thank you very much, Mayor Buck, members of council. Now is the time set for the public hearing on a resolution and ordinance that together I would characterize as both housekeeping and complex and difficult regulatory federal scheme for small cell wireless providers. This is a legislative decision on both of these, which is generally a policy decision within the discretion of city council, although, as usual, you must comply with all other laws, and that does include federal law in this case. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff. Testimony will then be received from the public. Individuals are allowed up to five minutes. Recognized neighborhood associations, homeowner associations, government agencies, or other incorporated public interest organizations will be allowed up to 10 minutes. The time limits shall not include time taken up by questions from the council or responses to such questions. Any person in attendance may cede his or her time for testimony to another person, but in no case shall any person's testimony be increased to greater than 10 minutes. I'll ask now if there are any financial conflicts of interest, reminding you that ex-party contacts and site visits do not be, need to be declared, since this is a legislative hearing. I'll ask if there are any financial conflicts of interest. Wait a moment, and if I hear none, I'll declare it for the record. Counselor Wenlin has indicated he has a cellphone. I would imagine part of a very large class of you that do, so we will consider that not to be a conflict of interest, but thank you for your upstanding remark. So I hear no financial conflicts of interest, and we're just about ready for the staff report. In this particular case, I did want to note that this is an ordinance and resolution that the city has been working on, actually, for quite some time, a number of years. And as the staff report indicated, the city hired a consultant. We've, over these past few years, the city attorney's office, in conjunction with your city staff, have worked with all of the utilities and industry providers that are affected by this ordinance. But in particular, I think many of you noticed that you received some extensive comments from the small cell, from the wireless industry. And although the city has respectful disagreements with some of their policy positions, there are two areas where we would like additional time to consult with the industry, and one of those has to do with radio frequencies, and the other one has to do with the differentiating between small cell wireless and larger wireless providers. So I bring that up now to let you all know that our recommendation is to have you all make a motion to continue the public hearing after you take testimony, ask questions of staff. Our recommendation is for you to make a motion to continue the public hearing until May 6th, at which time we can come back and answer any questions that you might have, and address at least those two concerns from the industry.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Mayor, councilors. Good evening. I'm Erica Rooney, Public Works Director and City Engineer. With me this evening is Nell Diamond, our Management Analyst in Public Works. And unfortunately, not in our audience this evening is Evan Boone, who deserves as much of a shout-out as, as Nell does regarding the amount of immense work that's gone on over the last several years. As Attorney Osneck mentioned, this has been going on for several years for us. We started some stuff during COVID, and like many things that started during COVID, we put some things on pause, came back to it a few times, things like that. But at this point, we are getting very, very close to the end of this effort, which is, it's been a huge lift, but we are trying to get ourselves basically into a place where we are up to current code, up to current law. And that's really what this has been about. It's a lot of housekeeping, but it is a kind of a, a complex matter. I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes reiterating a few things about what we're talking about. We're talking about franchise utilities in the right-of-way. And so, I think you all know what the right-of-way is, that's my home. It's what I care about the most, right? As the Public Works Director, all of the things, most of the things that we are doing are in the right-of-way, either streets, or sewer, or storm, or water. Those are the public utilities that we manage day in, day out. Then there's what we sometimes call private utilities, or sometimes are confused as public franchise utilities. And those are the other folks. And I put those into two categories. These are Erica's rules of categories, these are not legal definitions. But there's the major players that we know in the right-of-way and that you all see. PGE, who tends to be in this town quite a bit overhead with the big power lines, Northwest Natural, underground, but they're in the right-of-way, Comcast. Those are the three big players in the city that we see everywhere. The other minor players are all of the newer things, such as the telecom, small cells, things like that, such as, and those are entities that you, you have probably heard of, Verizon, a small version of Comcast, Zipley, Crown Castle, T-Mobile, name 10 others, I can't. But there's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
And they're small, but they're in the right-of-way, and basically, all of these players that you see in front of us are renting or using the public right-of-way for their services. That's really what we're talking about here. That's the, that's the franchise utilities that are sharing the space that I'm trying to maintain, that we're trying to maintain for our water, sewer, and storm like that. So there's a lot of conflicts, you hear me talk about that a lot. So it's, it's a challenge to manage not only what we're responsible for, but then we have all of these entities here who want to get in there as well. And so when we do a project, such as Boons Ferry Road several years ago, and put all of these folks underground, who use, except for Northwest Natural, they were underground already, but the rest of them were all overhead, and then we put them all underground to try and share space with our water, and our sewer, and our storm, it's a lot. So what we're, again, what we're talking about here is the rules and regulations and fees associated with renting space, so these folks can operate their businesses. That's Erica's version of franchise utilities.
Director, when you say, just, when you say small, do you, is it, you referring to the company size or the equipment?
Boy, I can't, I can't speak to the company size. But it's equipment. It's also, I refer to them as small in the sense of, when you talk about what our whole franchise utility fees are for the city that we cover every year, we get approximately $3.1 million a year from franchise utilities. I'm taking Republic Services out of it, they are a franchise utility, that's the, the waste recycling, things like that. I'm taking that out of the number. We get about $3.1 million a year. Of that, anywhere from $125,000 to $150,000, or about 5% are the minor folks. Those top players up there, the top three, are literally 95% of our income for franchise utilities.
And all of these folks fall into the minor folks category? In terms of our revenue?
The second category, yeah.
The second category there are the 5% category, if you will.
I wasn't even looking at the slide.
What I call the minors. And the majors, PGE, Northwest Natural, Comcast, their version, their, their fees each year equate to 95% of our total income in franchise utilities. So, um, let's see, how's this one gonna run? So again, tonight, as mentioned earlier, our objective really has, is, is about updating Chapter 51, the code language, to make it more readable, to clarify some of the language, to comply with all the federal and state and local laws regarding telecommunications in the public right-of-way. And there's a lot of laws, and there's a lot of lawyers, and there's a lot of FCC rules that go into all of this, and we have tried to be as careful as we possibly can to bring these codes up to current standards, and to be consistent with other cities as well. That's part of our agenda, is we don't want to be an outlier, we don't want to be different from what other cities are operating under, both as a fairness, but also for, for simplicity too. So, in simple terms, again, the issues that, that we are facing, Attorney Osneck mentioned, is that we are receiving, we, we, excuse me, one of the things we wanted to do is to fix our fee structure, and to be consistent with the other local agencies, like I just said. But some of the things that we anticipated, and we've seen in the last three, four days that you've received emails, is the opposition from some of those primary providers, the ones that were in the minor list, are not wanting to have their sub-leasers have to also pay for rent of the right-of-way, if you will. So that's kind of the bone of contention, that's one of the bigger parts of it. So there's work that could be done to revisit some of that language a little more clearly, make a few word changes, we're open to that certainly at this point. We've heard from several of them, and, and we expected this. Now we've got some real clarity, because we have four, as you saw, I think it was four, letters in the last couple of days, and that's great, that kind of puts some black and white to the issues for us. We heard from CTIA, which, they represent a, a number of wireless entities. We heard from Crown Castle, and we heard from a group called WPG that is representing Verizon, and AT&amp;T. So again, I think at this point, our group goal is really to, obviously was to ask about enacting these, this ordinance and the resolution, the ordinance to change the code, and the resolution to set the fees, but we're also open to considering, you know, a four to six-week extension if we need to, to revisit a few of these more recent comments that have come in, and ensure that they understand why we're gonna stick with some of it, and some of it, we may be able to converse a little bit further. But there are certain things that I think we will want to be consistent with our neighbors on. So if that's what council would like to do, again, it's a little different than what I think our, our staff recommendation was, which was to move right ahead, but we're certainly open to continuance at this point. Now, did I forget anything at this?
I don't think so. I mean, the idea is for us to come up with an equitable solution that is within FCC law, and also congruent with what other cities are doing. And we, we thought we were moving in that direction, but obviously, there are some issues that we still, in order to be good community partners, we feel like we need more time to evaluate and work with them, so.
Okay, well, we'll take the testimony, and then we'll come back with the questions. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone here would like to provide testimony on this and hasn't already filled out one of these nice blue forms, they're on the back table, and I hand it to Ms. Leonard. But we have one person on Zoom, and one person in person, we'll take our in-person person first, and that's Leila Vaga. Come on up. Good to have you here.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Leila Vaga. I am with the Wireless Policy Group, and I'm here on behalf of Verizon, and I wrote one of those four letters to you. I'd like to thank the, the city for updating regulation with regard to franchises and wireless and regulation of the right-of-way. I think it's important to stay up to speed on these things and update regulation. We do have some remaining concerns, as expressed in the various comment letters. I do think that a few targeted statements that clarify the city's intention would be helpful, because what you see in this draft, and in my professional opinion, my opinion only, is that this has been a process that's been going on, you know, the first CTIA letter was in 2022, and I know there were conversations even back farther than that. So I think that as it has evolved, perhaps some of the current intent of the city is just not reading clearly to industry in the language. So I would recommend a few simple statements that do- So I would recommend a few simple statements that do that. I specifically am particularly concerned about clarity in the fee resolution. And I want to talk a little bit about some suggestions that I have for how we might very cleanly see that cleaned up, and specifically the definition of "small cell" in there. So what we see in the resolution as drafted, or excuse me, the ordinance as drafted, is 51011301 clarifies when a right-of-way fee, meaning like a percentage of gross revenue kind of fee is paid, versus a per-attachment fee. But in the fee resolution, it doesn't reflect that same language. So I think that a simple fix to this, one potential fix, would be to just remove the definition of "small cell" from that section and the reference to "small cells", and instead just make that fee that's referenced for "small cell" reference Section 5101131 for the attachment fee. So in other words, call out the attachment fee as opposed to it specifically being for "small wireless." That's one clean way that potentially could work. It is conceivable that a wireless carrier or other might come in to attach something that doesn't meet the definition of "small wireless," strictly speaking. And wireless is regulated elsewhere in the code in Lake Oswego as well. So certainly, anything that would be installed would have to comply with that. But there are jurisdictions that allow macro sites in the right-of-way, like larger facilities. There are also facilities that largely comply with the definition of "small wireless facility", but might say have antennas that are four cubic feet in volume while still being fairly small. So, so a definition that references the language would be more consistent, but would also make it so that you don't have to come back in that instance or contemplate some alternate fee for a technology evolution that doesn't exist yet, essentially, in Lake Oswego. Just consistency in language and terms helps for consistency when it comes to the fees. And then there is one fee that is referenced that I don't know what it's for, and it's the additional attachment fee. So in prior versions of the drafting, that was pertaining to attaching to city assets. And my understanding is that is not the case now. So just clarifying what that fee is actually for would be helpful. And then if the definition of "small wireless facility" is going to remain, the largest concern on the Verizon side with the definition as it is right now is just that it contains a sentence that "cabling is excluded from the definition." And while Verizon has no objection to the "cabling" meaning between poles, like fiber and coax that are strung between multiple poles to get to the facility, being excluded from the definition, there is necessary fiber and coaxial cable that connects radios and antennas on the same pole. And so that, the equipment doesn't work unless there's a wire connecting it. So it's important to us that that wire that actually connects equipment on the same pole be included in the definition of "small cell," if you should choose to continue to define "small cell" in this ordinance, which, again, in my professional opinion, is not necessary if you just revise that definition just a little bit, or the description of the fee a little bit. So I will not repeat all of the items listed in the letter. I really appreciate staff, and especially, Nell has been wonderful in keeping us up to speed on what's going on. We were disappointed to see that there were no changes from the draft in the fall to the current draft. And we really appreciate what we hear from the city staff now about the intention of the ordinance. And I think we've come most of the way there. We're just, we're close. And just a few more clarifications, and I think we would have something that the industry could really support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Let me ask a question.
Absolutely.
So you, you represent Verizon.
Yes.
So how does Verizon, you know, what kind of assets does it have in the town?
Excuse me?
What kind of assets does Verizon have in Lake Oswego?
Largely macro sites on private. Yeah. The macro site facilities on private property are largely the assets they have right now. The wireless industry generally has not put many assets in the right-of-way in Lake Oswego because of the 7% gross revenue fee, which makes it cost prohibitive.
Oh, is that why our cell service is so bad?
It is one of the reasons. It is a challenge, just right here. And the regulation of wireless is complicated, of course. But yeah, that has historically prevented wireless carriers from seeking those kinds of solutions. I do not know the ins and outs of all of Verizon's deployment. That's proprietary information they keep in-house. But I did work for Verizon for 16 years before joining Wireless Policy Group, and very familiar with what they do. And to my knowledge, there are no current small wireless facilities in Lake Oswego, though it would not surprise me one bit if you start seeing some build plans to improve coverage and capacity, because Verizon is dedicated to improving capacity and providing high-quality wireless service.
No, no, "small cell." What did you say? There's no?
To my knowledge, there are no "small cell" facilities. So a "small cell" facility is when smaller equipment is put in the right-of-way on utility poles or light poles. So what we're used to for a traditional macro site facility, that's our term "macro site," is a rooftop or a tall tower that, where each carrier might have anywhere from six to 12 antennas, and they're large antennas. They're antennas that are four to eight feet tall.
Are those those big brown?
The big ones, big, big ones. Or on the rooftop, screened behind RFP walls. That's, that's a traditional cell site. In the past, gosh, five, six years or so, we've seen small wireless facilities adding capacity. So you can think of those macro sites as the coverage layer. They make sure that your phone works. And then, but the sites get bogged down the more traffic is on those sites. So what small cells do is they allow lower-power equipment to be closer to the end-user and serve people on the order of a few hundred feet instead of, instead of, you know, half a mile or a mile. And, and in that way, they can take that capacity off of the macro site network, allowing those macro sites to better serve the areas not served by the small cells. So it's all about allocation of capacity, because, I mean, anecdotally, just like, the way we use our devices has just gone through the roof. And growth in data usage continues to be exponential. And the way that we have gone from our cell phones being essentially emergency devices to now the remote controls of our lives, and the way our kids talk to our grandkid, to their grandparents, the way we work, the way we go to school, that all translates in a lot more data usage and the need for layered capacity and coverage in some areas to meet that need.
So the macro coverage is on private property?
Generally.
And lease space and have just private arrangements with those individuals? And it's the small micro that you put then on public, in the public right-of-way, typically on, maybe on public infrastructure? Or you lease it from, like, a PGE pole or?
We would typically put that on a PGE pole. Or if the city owns streetlight poles, we would attach to those poles.
And that's what you have none of, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge. I haven't, I didn't double-check before coming in today, but, but yeah, to my knowledge, there aren't any.
Because that's where our fees start coming in.
And yes, yes. And the per-site fee, we appreciate the responsibility of the city to comply with the FCC regulations with regard to that fee needing to be on a per-site basis. But we also, I, there is the concern also, I wasn't gonna go into all the details of the concerns, but there is the concern of if someone like, say, a Crown Castle, which is an infrastructure company, is then building that small cell facility, and then, say, Verizon is then the carrier utilizing that facility. As drafted now, both Crown Castle and Verizon pay the same fee for the same facility, which effectively doubles the cost of, of operating that facility in the city.
Well, I know, I know. Maybe we're gonna hear from them. Why, can I just, why would you, why would Verizon lease equipment from Crown Castle instead of just installing it themselves?
Oh, there's so many complexities in terms of tower ownership and the finances there. But many reasons. One, Crown Castle and other organizations like that. I mentioned Crown only because I know Crown submitted a letter and has spoken specifically to these particular concerns, but there are other concrete companies that are similar. But those kind of infrastructure companies, it is their business to build those sites and manage them efficiently, and to take on that expense management cost of, of those facilities. So, and they, it's really coming out of a model where they do that for macro facilities as well. So the finances of owning and operating a tower is its own particular business. In the same way that a business owner might own a building and operate that building, and then lease out space to tenants to operate their retail businesses, tower companies are doing the same thing. And so for those same financial reasons why a retail business owner may not want to own the property in which they're leasing space for their store, a wireless carrier may decide they don't want to own the asset that is the, the structure providing their wireless service, though they do own and operate the frequencies through the FCC. They license the frequencies from the FCC and operate the wireless communication services that goes through them.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your testimony and helping us, you know, we, we're all learning.
I love answering questions about wireless. I could do this all day. If you have any questions, please, now or later, feel free to ask.
Well, no. Well, thank you very much.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, Councilwoman.
So to follow up on that, a couple of questions. One, those few little details that we, that you mentioned, is that typical of the rest of the agreements that you have around the metro area?
You mean in terms of the differentiate, the, I apologize, I'm not sure which details you mean.
Well, most of the details in your letter.
Oh, yes. So typically in the region, yes, the wireless is regulated on a per-site basis with definitions in the fee resolution that match the ordinance that is associated with it. We have been talking to jurisdictions throughout the region. Most recently, we had work sessions with the city of Portland with respect to this issue, where we got wireless industry members, including myself, in a room with staff of OCT up in Portland to talk through language and go through that for the, the aim of consistency. And, and yes, so a lot of the comments that you see in both my letter and in the CTIA letter are really aimed at, at that kind of consistent language, where, where the regulation of the right-of-way, we understand the intent is to go to the licensed model as opposed to the franchise model, and no objection to that. That, either way, is fine with us, but we absolutely understand the desire to simplify the administration of that. No concerns with that whatsoever. Our concerns really come down to just making sure that the, that the local ordinances are consistent with FCC regulation. And then as we review these agreements, we also run them by, or not agreements, I misspoke, these ordinances which replace the franchise agreements. We also run them by our attorneys and risk management folks, because the code then ends up having provisions that would, in other regulatory frameworks, be managed by franchise agreements.
So I guess I want to go back to that 7% utility tax. So in the big picture of things, is there anything in our current policy then, when you're saying almost there's double taxation? Will that prevent us from having better service? I don't like the 7%, like, the utility taxes, okay, 5%. Whatever it is, I guess I'm looking at trying to provide our citizens with good cellphone coverage, and, and the mayor didn't outright say it, but I will, full confession or full, whatever, I've been a Verizon customer for 28 years, or whatever, whenever you started cellphone service. The bottom line is that we have some terrible blank spots in Lake Oswego. And I'm wondering if, if there's action or things that we have done to prevent you from providing better service in Lake Oswego? Or if we just don't like you because you're giving us bad service, do we, we go the other way? I, I guess the, the big picture is that your job is to give good customer service to all your customers. And as a paying customer, there's too many blank spots in Lake Oswego. And you can look up my address, you can look up several addresses. I hear it from lots of different people. So I'm just trying to figure out, through this new proposal that we have to deal with on this resolution, is it going to give our chances to have better service in Lake Oswego? Or is it going to have you still not invest? Or do limited investment just to keep your customers slightly happy?
Thank you for clarifying that question. I appreciate it. And in the past, if we were to look to locate small wireless facilities in Lake Oswego, our understanding of the, of the code was that we would be subject to a percentage of gross revenue fee the moment we located equipment in the right-of-way. And it is my professional opinion that that has caused a lack of investment in those kind of facilities here, because it is, it is a matter of cost. And competing for that funding with, you know, these are large corporations where there are national funding budgets, and the funding goes to the places where we can build. And so, so there is a internal process within the wireless carrier of getting the funding to build out your projects. And if your projects have uncertain process or higher cost, they are less likely to be built than in communities that have more streamlined process or lower cost. And we, I do think that this ordinance, as I understand the intentions of, of staff of the city with respect to this ordinance, I do think that the per-site fee that is compliant with the FCC regulations will allow for additional investment in, in Lake Oswego by opening up those right-of-way spaces. Now, in order, now, what might do that more is addressing, prioritizing structures in the right-of-way, and, and prioritizing that in terms of the overall wireless code. If there is an interest in allowing macro facilities in the right-of-way, that would certainly be helpful in these areas where there are macro, where there are large tract residential communities. I'm minded of Snohomish County up in Washington State, where you see a lot of them. These are decisions that certainly we'd be happy to speak to at length and in a different format on, but they would be more wholesale changes. I, I do think that Crown raises a valid point with regard to paying the same fee twice for the same site.
Kind of double taxation with that representation.
Well, it's just the, the double fee. The double fee structure makes it harder for entities like that to operate, which in turn makes it harder for the wireless carriers to utilize those services that might allow for more expedited deployment.
You talk about the macro versus the micro, and, and when, I've been on city council for a long time, when you, when the small little cell towers were being proposed, and we needed to have all kinds of them for 5G versus 4G, you could have more, just bigger towers everywhere. I guess I'm looking at the right-of-way, it, there's, are there opportunities outside of right-of-ways to put all this, we need a whole bunch of those small little units, right, in order to have good 5G coverage?
So 5G stands for fifth-generation technology. And one thing that has evolved in the last five years since we started talking about 5G is that the network radio protocols that allow for more efficient use of the 4G spectrum have now rolled out. So a lot of times when your phone says 5G, it's those same frequencies that were being used for 4G, but just being used more efficiently. Now, that ultra-high-speed millimeter-wave technology that, that, that allows for like gigabyte speeds at sites that are in close proximity, that is very short-range. It is, I've heard estimates anywhere from 200 feet to 1,000 feet, depending on the equipment. So you really do have to be close to it in order to get that, the benefit of that kind of speed. But that's all under the umbrella of fifth-generation technology. The, the core question, you know, setting terminology aside, opening up more opportunities to place more wireless facilities gives you better coverage and capacity, and allowing for that, again, dual-layer of coverage. The macro sites that provide the overarching coverage, and then in spots that have high traffic, to bring in those, those smaller facilities to serve those areas that have higher traffic and offload the macro facilities is very helpful. But we have seen that small cells have not seen the adoption that we thought they might have had about five years ago, and there are many reasons for that. Probably too much to go into here. But certainly, concerns over cost of operating those and, and regulatory barriers to entering. And operating the wire in the right-of-way is more complicated. So the wireless industry has learned that and retooled, and to a certain degree, has been, has been developing other alternatives for deploying 5G to complement small cells, because it just is morphed. And our industry changes very fast. The technology evolves very quickly. So where something is not going as initially planned, we pivot and adapt and deploy in a different way.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vega. Thank you for taking our questions.
Yes, very happy to. Thanks so much.
Slender, who do we have on Zoom?
Merity Papst.
Ms. Papst, Mr. Papst?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Buck and Councilors. My name is Merity Papst, and I'm here today on behalf of New Singular Wireless, who you probably know as AT&amp;T Wireless. And, and we did send a, a letter earlier today. First, I just wanted to say we appreciate the staff report earlier in the meeting and support a continuance that would allow some discussion between staff and wireless industry representatives. As you have heard so far today, some of the issues get a little complex in terms of, you know, what, what's required by federal law, and then, you know, what, you know, what, what a small cell is, and how other communities are regulating them. And I, I think with some additional time, we can come to agreement on several sort of minor amendments to the proposal. Just three edits we spoke to in the letter that we suggest for the ordinance. The first is some revisions to the table on page two of the fee resolution that would separate out wireless communications from other types of communications. And this would clarify that wireless providers pay an attachment fee rather than a percentage of revenue fee for citing their wireless facilities in the right-of-way. And also, language that would match the, the language in the, the ordinance. Second, we do, we similarly have concerns about the definition of "small cell facility." Second, we do, we similarly have concerns about the definition of small cell facility that's in the resolution. Subsection four of that definition is not in the federal regulation. And our understanding from discussions back in 2022 and our experience with the consultant that the city was using at that time was that the intent of that language was to reach wireless providers with percentage of revenue fees. And I don't believe that's the city's intent at this time. And again, the, the definition is not consistent with the federal regulation. So AT&amp;T suggests that either subsection four be deleted or just any restating in the federal definition be removed. I, I don't see any need to have a, in this particular fee resolution. Third, and I, I think Lila already spoke to this as well, there is a reference in section four to additional attachment fees per pole. And your ordinance number 2820 is cited for the authority for that attachment fee. But I, I don't find a reference to attachment fees in that ordinance at all. And so it's not clear what it was intended to do. It's also confusing because it's the same language that's in your proposed new ordinance. And AT&amp;T suggests that this fee be deleted or, or if intent, intent is something else, you know, we'd like to better understand what the city intends there. I thank you for your consideration of these comments today. I was personally involved in the stakeholders' meetings back in 2022. And, you know, our understanding of what was going on at that time is coloring our comments that we're making right now. So if you have any questions about, you know, what happened at that time, I'm happy to try to address those. And, and, you know, happy then to work with staff, to, to work on some minor clarifications here.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Papst. Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to provide testimony? Okay. Close the public hearing and we'll ask Director Rooney to come back on up and I'll, and I know that Councilor Boop has a question about the legality of the.
Yeah, yeah. My question, like, I was worried when I was reading the letters, and they say that our fees are prohibitive and unlawful. What, why is it?
I'll take that one since I heard lawful. Let me put it this way. They, we have a respectful disagreement with the industry, as does the League of Cities, as did the city of Portland, over, and I will use Counselor Wendlin's phrase that he used to describe what the lobbyist was saying, which is that it's, their position is that they think it is double taxation. And the cities, municipalities, those of us that have rights of way respectfully disagree with that. There are two users, there are two occupants in the right-of-way, and, and cities are entitled and, and do in fact recover those fees. The definition of small cell wireless is a federal definition, and that's an area where I think it would be helpful to have more conversation with the industry. We may not change our definition, but particularly in light of these rapid changes in the deployment of small cell wireless, it seems like it is, it would be wise to revisit that with the, with the industry. So, and, and I particularly appreciated the person from AT&amp;T acknowledging that in 2022, the, the divide between industry and the city was much larger. And so maybe some of their comments here today are really aimed more at questioning the city's intent and asking us to clarify that in the regulations versus a perception that the way that we are attempting to regulate the wireless industry conflicts with federal law. We don't believe that it does, but of course, anytime the industry says that they believe that a definition that we've imposed is preempted by federal law, we of course want to take that seriously and address it with them. So I think, you know, to sum up, I think that we have respectful disagreements about the legality of the way we want to impose fees, but we are open to discussing with the industry their other arguments that, for example, the way that we, the way that the technology today deploys in terms of radio frequencies or some of these other developments that in light of federal law, the way that they're changing the technology, that it is, it seems smart for us to meet with them again over the next six weeks and see if we can either make changes or at least better understand where we're apart.
Yes. And, yes, thank you. And my other question is, it comes like with what? The mayor, I was in West Africa two years ago in a, like, remote area, like, in an island. I was FaceTiming with the mayor and Michael. Very well, he came to Iron Mountain, MIA, no more cell. So, yeah, it's like ridiculous. Like, so that's why I think it's sometime, the industry, you, you, honestly, it's even shameful that you were kind of questioning the fees that we are doing because you're not serving our communities. Most of the areas in Lake Oswego, you have your cellphone, you don't have, my school, you have some calls that drops. And we are in a developed nation. Senegal is, the economy of San is maybe a hundredth of Oregon, and we have cells in the remote areas. Lake Oswego, we don't have that. So I see it not normal for you to question the fees we are doing and say that's illegal. That was the question. I knew it wasn't. I mean, I know, really. We have our outside council, we have our folks. The other thing is, another example, I was, I was having a conditional use permit, and the city told me you have to have a sidewalk for people to come which were, you know, like from Boone's Ferry to Twin Fur. I started doing the thing. They told me, no, there's a public pole of PGE, and there also you, like, it's PGE Comcast they have. So they told me, okay, now you have to remove that pole. And it was $100,000 for a business. Like, it would be the death of our school. And I just say, are you guys, what, if you go there, even Mayor Kent was so mad that they made us do that. Like, we had to come, go around the pole. If you go there, Twin Fur, like, you, it's me, I build that. It's, and the, the public, like, the folks who are billionaire, like Comcast and all, they refused to move the thing. Finally, they asked to have guide wires, just like for me to be able to build that thing. You know, so, and that's, again, my question that I think we need to, to put more fees on these companies so that, you know, like, they, we can update most of those. No, really, like, when we are building a sidewalk, they should move the pole and pay for it because they're using our, our right-of-way, they're using our, our resources. So I am very happy that your folks did all this thing. And honestly, the way you want us to go, that's where we're going, me personally.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Boop. Counselor Wendlin.
I would just support the, the delay and, and have you guys work out a few more little details is the way I would work it. And that would be my suggestion. And that maybe in the future, we should have a city council goal of maybe reviewing how we can best, I guess, position Lake Oswego to have exceptional cell service.
Which is regular cell service.
Or just, I would say, this, this community deserves.
We don't need to be streaming Minnie the Cowboy going down Iron Mountain, but if I could at least talk to my mom, it'd be great.
I do believe, yes, we have too many drop zones and, and we have just horrible service within, I mean, and most people are giving up their landlines. So it's a, it's a problem that's going to continue. So I think that's a discussion for later. But because we have a couple of the representatives from those facilities or from those companies, I think it's worth it for you to go back and, and say that we'll play ball if you play ball. So anyway, the discussion will continue, and I think there's just a few details to figure out.
Thank you, Counselor Wendlin. Counselor Afkin.
Comment to the city attorney. I understand, I'm sensitive to double taxing terminology. Is it really double taxing or is it single taxing, but there are two different companies that they need to pay their dues? I ask that we look at it carefully so it's not double taxing, even though the perception is there. So to me, it's if this company makes $50 and this company makes $50, well, you pay your taxes, pay your dues. But if we are collectively there, we're taxing this company and taxing this company for the other revenue, it's like, let's, let's look at that. The other thing is, I heard that if there is a high usage in an area, they would elect to have a small cell. So whether we have, we say there's absolutely zero fees in this area, they still look at the usage and they say, well, you have 20 houses, it doesn't pay up to put that cell there. So I want us to be careful how we talk about the usage versus is this really holding you up to do, provide additional services?
Well, I think they don't know because it's a dead zone. They don't really know the demand because nobody can talk. Just my opinion.
Counselor Corrigan.
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in and support Counselor Afkin's comments. I believe that Crown, Castle, and Cook and Verizon have separate revenue streams that should probably be recognized as revenue, different revenues, revenue streams and should pay those fees. Just my two cents. Thanks.
I think in general, I mean, we probably want to be consistent with the other jurisdictions in terms of the structure, the amount. I know that's what we had talked about, as well as creating a, you know, a good environment. Do, do we not allow the small cell right now? We have, okay, so we allow, okay. Can I just ask a procedural question? So I, I did close that public hearing. Can I take that back? Or can, can I make a motion? Does everyone, can we leave it, or reopen it? Can I reopen it?
Yeah, Ms. Bennett just pointed out, you can always reopen it. If you'd like to do, make that motion now in addition to the one you have, you can say, I'm, I'm going to reopen the public hearing and continue it until.
I'm going to reopen the public hearing. We're going to continue it until May 6, and I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing until May 6. Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to the council president. Counselor Corrigan, second. I made the motion. All right. Any other discussion on continuing this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back here on May 6.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
It all wrapped up. All right, we're going to take a brief recess.
Like, really brief?
Yeah, bathroom break, yeah. Yeah, bathroom break, yeah.[215.01]
Along with the district plan and sort of the refinement of the district plan to remove the streetcar, an urban renewal plan was also adopted in 2012. And really, that was intended to finance a lot of the public investments that were planned to take place within this area. So it was about forty-three million in public investments that was expected to be generated through tax increment financing at that time. As again, I'm sure you're aware, the U R P, Urban Renewal Plan, was repealed just two months after. It was approved due to a change in council priorities at that time. So this is just kind of rendering from that original framework plan, actually. So this is more accurately, I think we would say this is the 2011 Foothills Framework Plan. This is sort of an earlier concept. So you can see the streetcar there. And there was sort of envisioned this almost like a Spanish Steps-style entrance transitioning between downtown and the Foothills District. You can see that depicted here along with sort of mixed-use commercial ground floor, retail ground floor with residential above character. Another thing I would just point out that there are, you can see there's six stories included in these buildings. So there was an idea that there would be some additional height to account for the lower slopes and the sort of fact that you can't see the buildings as much because of that topographical change. All right. All right. So you might be asking, why are we revisiting the plan right now? And I think one of the primary reasons really is to account for the city's recent plans to replace the existing Triang Creek wastewater treatment plant, which is located within the district. The 2012 plan assumed that the site that is existing currently, which you can see in the photo or the map on the top right, can see where the current location is and the sort of proposed new location of the facility outlined in red. This is a bit of an older graphic, so I think there's been some refinements, obviously, but this is just really a rough one. You know, so obviously, that's changed. The city is now seeking a public-private partnership for the construction and operation of a new replacement facility, which we're calling the, just the WWTF, or just a wastewater treatment facility on that adjacent site there. So that's kind of roughly the plan. You know, I think really there are some pretty big implications, though, with that sort of replacement of the facility on the plan as it was previously constructed. And particularly, the street network will be disrupted with the use of that site. So it does kind of render a large portion of the previous north district of the area unusable. But it does present some new opportunities as well, you know, where there's a new six-acre site. Former site was fourteen acres. So there is this former wastewater treatment plant that could present some opportunities for redevelopment. And there is a larger site there. So really gaining eight acres in total, potentially, of redevelopment area here. Whoa, that went fast. All right. So just an update, again, things I'm sure you're very much aware of. But community context currently in the year 2025, very few changes have occurred within the district since the urban renewal plan was repealed. Not really, the repeal of the urban renewal plan made it difficult for the redevelopment agency to develop the infrastructure and make that area development ready. So really, that's going to need to be a big part of this newer effort. There must be some type of financing strategy for this area. And I would just note that the urban renewal plan update is not included within the scope of work for this particular RFP. This is really just focusing on the plan update and associated amendments. So we do anticipate that that work will be completed on a similar timeline, but it's just not included within this particular scope. Other contextual changes, just to mention that, again, things that you're very much aware of, affordable housing has become a city priority in recent years, and we've made some progress towards that end. And of course, we've committed to taking some actions through the housing needs analysis, or really the housing production strategy, to address the housing needs that were identified in the housing needs analysis, including rezoning of land to increase residential capacity and the use of tax increment financing to support affordable housing development. So just speaking with, you know, speaking more directly to the current effort to update the Foothills District Plan, again, this is all information I'm sure you're very aware of. In 2024, you all had initiative to begin work to use a plan to use urban renewal to support the redevelopment of Foothills. As a part of that work, the city started kind of scoping this out, and we received a $745,000 grant from Metro. We were able to finalize the intergovernmental agreement with Metro to accept that award on February 6. So that's a bit of a recent update. I think the last time we were here to you was a consent item to approve our end of that agreement. So that's been finalized now. And of course, 2025, now we have another associated initiative to begin the update of the Foothills District Plan. And so that's really what I've been getting to work on most recently. We issued a request for proposals on March 7 to really find a consultant team to help us with this update of the plan, to really revisit it in light of current community priorities and to ensure, you know, consistency with those priorities as well to account for some of the sort of changes in the context of that area and the relocation of the plant. So in terms of the scope of work captured within the RFP, again, this is currently out on the street right now. But that would involve about seven sort of categories of deliverables, which you can see here, including public involvement strategy, which we have a pretty big, we have a good sort of sense of where that's going to go in the scope of work. But we do want to allow for some public discussion and refinement of a public involvement strategy. So really, the idea is to try to focus on community members who have been typically underrepresented in the planning process, reach out to those folks, target them. Also, just kind of touching base on this, elements that were in the scope, we also envision the process to include both the technical advisory committee and the community advisory committee. We do intend to come back to city council to talk a little bit more about public involvement and public engagement in, I believe it'll be June 17. So that's when we would come to you to talk about the creation of a community advisory committee for this effort. Other deliverables would be sort of opportunities and constraints, summary map and paper, just to sort of lay out all the different key issues that come out of the inventory and analysis phase for this work. So if you again look through the scope, there's a lot of different sort of elements here. There's, you know, analysis of the floodplain, of geotechnical information of transportation systems in the area. There's just a huge, huge list of different infrastructural components that will be included in this work, as well as other sort of things we think about for planning purposes as well. So we're trying to really cover our bases there and tease as much of the previous work as possible. We then will take some of that work, try to transition into developing a vision statement and some goals and objectives for the area, using that 2012 plan vision statement as a starting point, and really want to make sure that, you know, that community engagement is woven into every part of this effort. So really wanting to take the time to vet that with folks and have, you know, some events around that particular phase of the work. We would then move to developing both concept and schematic level plan alternatives. So we would come up with four sort of higher-level concept alternatives, talk a bit about those, and then refine those down to two more detailed schematic level alternatives. And talk a little bit more about specific projects that would be included with each of those. Then there would be a decision. We'd select a preferred alternative essentially and work to create a draft and final framework plan based on that preferred schematic level alternative. And so, you know, we expect to complete that chunk of the work and to hopefully have the framework plan, final framework plan adopted by the end of 2026. It's the sort of tentative schedule at least. And the post-plan amendments and implementation would be comp plan or code amendments that we would expect the consultant to help us out with, that we expect to have adopted by the end of 2027. So sort of two big chunks of the work there. So just some dates, I guess, that you can associate with some of those deliverables. You know, it doesn't exactly correspond, but these are the deadlines that we've agreed to through our intergovernmental agreement or I G A with Metro. So you can see this is kind of what we're accountable to develop under the terms of that grant agreement. So this is what we will also expect our consultants to have to stick to as well, of course. And in terms of how this will, you know, come to council, the idea at least that we've currently fleshed out, for the rest of the year, you know, the touch points where we come back and talk to you about this would be May 20. We'll have a larger study session on implementation of the housing production strategy, as well as we will come to you for the award of the contract for the RFP at that point as well. On the 17th of June, we would then talk about the community advisory committee and public engagement strategy more generally. We would then hopefully be able to appoint members to the community engagement, our community advisory committee, soon after on July 15, before recess, hopefully, and then come back to discuss vision, goals, and objectives with you all in November. And see, just kind of tentative future dates that we're thinking about. Again, this is all kind of intended to meet those bigger deadlines of adopting the framework plan by the end of 2026 and adopting amendments to implement that plan by the end of 2027. So that's kind of the general outline of the schedule. I don't want to go into too much detail here. There's a lot of, there's a lot in that RFP. And of course, a lot of the details of the scope of work are still subject to some modification that we could, you know, talk about with consultant and refinement, of course. So there are some potential for, there is some potential that they will be refined, but for the most part, just wanted to make you aware of what's going on and not have, you know, the 17th of June be the first time that you're hearing about this effort when we're talking about public engagement, giving you a bit of a heads up.
Appreciate that. Yes. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Olson?
I've got a couple. Were there any strings attached to the Metro grant?
What do you mean by strings?
I mean, they're telling us how that we have to do things. I mean, oftentimes with Metro, things, they have these fourteen pages of things that you have to follow. So I was just wondering.
We do have to follow the grant agreement, and there are deadlines that are associated with that grant agreement. And there's some other protocol, I think, in terms of reporting, et cetera, that we have to follow. But.
More administrative versus direction of what we're supposed to do with the development?
No, I don't think, we haven't received any input from Metro in terms of like the direction of the development or anything of that nature, in terms of the overall vision. You know, I think the emphasis on community engagement is certainly something that was appreciated by Metro when they reviewed this. And so I think that's something that, there's sort of shared goals when it comes to that. I think we want to make sure that that's woven in as much as possible throughout. But yeah, no, no direct input there.
I'm, light goes off. There we go. I would guess that there's a couple of things we just have to keep in mind. This area is inside of our town center, and so we'll have to meet whatever the regional framework plan says for intensity of development in the town center. But at this point, I know Metro is very interested in helping communities that are trying to meet their housing production strategies on existing land. It's, you know, their interest is, let's find out if we can actually help Lake Oswego meet its housing targets without having to expand the urban growth boundary, which is probably why they funded this grant in the first place. They also funded the 2012 grant as well. And so I think they're probably also interested in making sure that we continue to want to redevelop this property, to redevelop this property. So I'm not concerned that there's any hidden Metro agenda here. Again, this is part of our town center, and so they will be interested in holding us to the standards that we ourselves adopted when we put this part of town into the town center. And that's really about density.
Right. I'm just, so I guess it leads to kind of, here's my feedback on this, is it's an open slate right now, or an open canvas, you might say. And with community input, I don't want to limit or steer the conversation to a specific target that's already been predetermined. And what I'm saying on that is that, you know, maybe everyone wants to have parks, maybe everyone wants to have twenty-story buildings, maybe everybody wants, I mean, I want the, when it says the four alternatives, you know, and the concept of, I would really like for us to dream and have no real strings attached to telling us how we have to do it. I understand the whole thing with housing. I think we all agree that it's a perfect opportunity to do housing. But I'm hoping that the composition of the consulting team is such that they could have the capacity to have from almost landscaping to high-rise in their bandwidth, and they're not just a housing production consultant that is after a target. So I guess that's.
No, I think that's a reasonable, I mean, although I will say that if you decide to create the whole area to parks, then we'll have to figure out where to build housing instead. It's fine. I mean, no, that, but I think those options would be on the table. I'll just tell you, like, one of the questions on my mind is that in 2012, we, almost all the development was mixed-use. And I am not convinced that in 2020, 30, 2030, 2035, that much retail space is going to be actually a good thing for the community. So I'm hopeful we can stay open-minded to what are the alter, we had a very, I'm sorry, planners, Neotrad approach to this development in, in sort of the Oregon way, right? It was gonna, and I'm not positive that some of those economic assumptions that we had back in 2009 and 2010 are still good assumptions for the future of this neighborhood in the long run. Doesn't mean no retail, but I'm not positive you need ground floor retail in every building down there.
Yeah. Right. And that's what I guess I'm saying is, I just don't want to have, so that we can, we can, no constraints. And then I guess the consulting team really needs to have the capacity that they, they can look at different things like that, i.e. the development in Vancouver was dreamed up by, you know, people, and Vancouver really got behind it, and it all made it work. And now it's one of their hallmark anchor points that you go to. And so I just want another project like that for Lake Oswego. And then the community engagement, I think, is great. And it's definitely the Lake Oswego way, and I'm 100% supportive of that. My thing, though, is we have to be careful with, i.e. like, we have North Anchor, which needs private money to develop things. And so I don't know, from the community engagement, how we marry those two things of, we may have a dream for something, but the money won't come. Because, you know, we're, so I guess to be cognizant of that so that we have enough development people represented in the community engagement to say, hey, you know, you guys, great idea, but the problem with that is that we're not getting any, there's no way we could get that funded, that type of thing.
Well, and the urban renewal plan, when you get there, and I'm sure that we have sort of market feasibility built into the consultant RFP, yes, like, there's some reality check at some point.
Yeah, there's cost estimating and all that.
But for sure, the urban renewal plan will get you there, because you aren't going to be able to form an urban renewal district to make public investments if it's not going to lead to development. So you will get there either through the front door or through the kitchen, if that makes any sense at all.
Yeah. Right. I just.
All I'm saying is this one plan might not do it all for you. You might have to marry it with the urban renewal plan.
Right. No, all I'm saying is that, again, we just have to put some realistic. So yeah, it has to be real so that we can get it funded. So super excited, super excited that you get to work on something besides just housing production.
Yeah. I mean, it is housing production as well, and we have committed to, I just want to be as clear as possible, though, but the HPS specifically has a project for tax increment financing to be used in this area to support affordable housing. So we do have our own sort of boundaries that we've created for ourselves that we need to operate within, in addition to our housing needs that we need to fill.
But it doesn't all have to be affordable housing.
No, not at all. No. But there are certain sort of things that we've already agreed to, right?
I understand that, and I'm, I think we're all for that. But I don't think we want to market this thing initially to say, this is an affordable housing project down in Foothills. Okay? We have to be really careful of that, because if we get into that, then we're going to stop the dreaming, and we're not going to have a good project, I guarantee you. So anyway, that's just my.
Yeah. And, you know, I just, I think it's reflected in the RFP. We're looking for consultants that have a variety of different skill sets, you know, not just necessarily when it comes to urban design or landscape architecture, although we do think that those are extremely critical, architecture as well. But, you know, we're looking for, obviously, the full depth of engineering knowledge. Really, some of the transportation barriers to this area are going to be extremely important in activating it. And I think there's no way to really even talk about redeveloping these areas without solving some of these engineering-related barriers. So there's really no getting around it, I would say. But absolutely agree that it was, it is extremely critical to the success of this project to make it realistic. And yeah, I think we're doing our best to make the RFP reflect that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Afghan.
Mr. Olson, could you go back to the rendering you had? I think it was page two or?
From 2011, sure.
I think the only car I see there is a Ford Taurus, and that needs to be replaced with a hybrid.
Oh, God. Hybrid, not just the full E V, is it?
I'm trying to compromise with some of my colleagues here. When I saw, I think this is the first time I've seen this rendering. When I saw this, it got me excited. So I'm all in with some caveat that Counselor Wedlam brought up. What is it that we could be proud of thirty years from now? So as part of that RFP, I don't know what it's all in there. When I go back to thirty years ago, the vision that was put forth, that we're living in it right now, that was awesome. So what do we need? What do we want to be proud of thirty years from now? That's what we're going to have to envision and land there. So this is, this looks awesome. I got excited. But needs more thoughts, more visions to bring something home that's exciting. And there were several things that went through my mind as soon as I saw mid-rises, that we're going to have these beautiful investments around a wastewater treatment. So what do they see from up there? And depending on what they see, that's the low-rent district or high-rent district, because nobody wants to look into a wastewater.
How do we integrate that with the broader vision in a successful manner, right?
So we want to do this smartly. So the end product is what we're looking for. An environmental factor like odors, noise, and those kind of things all in this equation, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
But the vision is awesome. I'm in.
Yeah. Well, I will say, we're not, we're not selling this vision right now. I'm just kind of telling you about what happened before. We'll see what.
Done.
Yeah. But, you know, I do appreciate the idea of thinking big. And I think that, you know, this project is really going to require us to think on every scale. And those, you know, really, really finite details would be just as important as making sure that this bigger picture sort of vision and concept that is sellable and can win over folks in just an image is something that doesn't get lost along the way.
Right. Well, it's a, you know, what was so cool about this back in 2012 was, was the, you know, connection between the whole Foothills area, you know, and I think that's what the steps were accomplishing and our downtown, is it's such a, such a great resource down there, but so hidden. You know, you don't see it, and then you go down there, and it's kind of, and except for the park, you know, which is very nice. And we kind of build, built on what's already down there, too. There is, you know, a lot of housing down there. It was our, in fact, one of our first urban renewal projects was the Oswego Point Apartments, of course, where there used to be the cement factory, how wonderful that must have looked. And so it's, but it's different than our other urban renewal areas in that, I mean, there's, we're starting from scratch. You know, our urban renewal down here, we had it downtown, you know, with commercial buildings and things like that. So we just made it better. Same thing with Lake Grove, you know, we had a, that urban renewal area has worked to spur further development. But we've never really had to think too much about like the whole plan, because it just kind of, people came in and they proposed, you know, things like Lake Village. And I mean, we've crafted it somewhat, like with the hotel, and the things that we've wanted. But for the most part, we've just kind of set the stage and let others. But this, I guess, will be kind of a combination of both, perhaps, of, you know, thinking through what, how the infrastructure will inform then the ultimate development and what's, you know, feasible from a market perspective and what people are building and, you know, what, what, what different ideas are out there. And then a lot of the constraints that we faced in 2012 still exist today. Traffic hasn't gotten better on Highway 43. And that was always the big, you know, the big question is, and so there could be even other opportunities to look at those kind of improvements, you know, along with this project as well, just to facilitate, you know, the, the impacts, I suppose, of, of the, of the development. But I think one reason why we've been so successful, and I wasn't around when we set the whole, this urban renewal area back, I mean, hardly none of us were around. Yeah, I wasn't even born yet. So, but when we did Boone's Ferry, we did have such a good group of people who weren't just, it wasn't a rubber stamp group, you know, it was like a visionary group of community members who came together, and they really led the process, you know, in conjunction with, you know, folks that do the work. But I think that will be important here. We real thoughtful about, you know, and I know there's a framework for a committee that we had to put in the RFP and stuff, but I think we might want to rethink that a little bit, so we don't put together our garden variety, you know, pluck one from here, 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 and, you know, and really, people who can, can put forth that vision for what this area could be in the context of their life here in, in, in Lake Oswego, and then blend that with the expertise that the other people will bring in, you know, from, you know, their professional knowledge and, and other experiences, too. So I think that will be critical, you know, critical. You got to have the big thinkers, especially for something like this, and how we're going to overcome some of the, the big challenges that will exist, and that we have a politically viable plan, because we know what happened to the last plan. Didn't fail because of technical problems, went down politically. We don't want that to happen here again. So, but it's a different, it is a different day.
So no train in the.
I think the train, yeah.
In the next picture.
Well, now there's no money. I don't know how that would have gotten paid for. We can't even get a bus to go down 43. Start there, you know. So anyway, but thank you for bringing this introduction to us. I think this is very exciting. It's great, the, the timing of how this is all working out with the wastewater treatment plant, and then the council's support of, of the reinvigoration of this plan and the urban renewal district that will follow. But I mean, this will be work that will have to be, I mean, this will go beyond all of us for certain, you know, and work that will carry on for a long time. So it's exciting to start, set the table for it, I guess.
Yeah, thank you so much. And yeah, I think it's very, very exciting, you know, just to think of this as not, you know, just kind of a, an area of the city that you kind of ignore. This could be really this huge gateway to the Willamette. That's a huge asset, this land. There are many constraints, but it's also, you know, really adjacent to downtown, right on the Willamette. It's waterfront property. There's a lot of opportunities as well, so.
Is it its own town center, or do we combine it with the downtown, of the downtown town center?
Yeah.
Just curious. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Thanks, colleagues.
There's going to be tunnels and bridges and all kinds of stuff. Yeah, underground, underground State Street. They can just go 43 right under from West Lynn. Yeah, roundabouts, yes.
Next item on the agenda is a study session on wholesale water rate adjustments and a proposal. We have Director Rooney and Director Cross joining us, as well as, do we have the consultant joining us as well?
We do.
They're going to tear us up?
Yes, Mary, we do. Sergey.
Good evening.
Welcome to your.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening again. I'm here for my frequent flyer mouse this evening, third time up. So switching gears substantially from the last two times I was in front of you this evening, we're going to talk about wholesale water rate updates. And we did provide a brief overview of the situation. We'll get into a lot more detail here with our consultant in just a minute. With me, though, tonight, of course, is our finance director, Sean Cross, who knows a lot about all of our water rates and other utility rates, if there are other questions there. Plus, Sean's been involved with other rate analysis that have been done in the past fifteen years, the last one being in 2019 regarding this particular issue. So with us online is Sergey Tarasov, who's with FCS Group. I know that they have been in front of us before for other rate analysis work. So that they do a wide variety of this type of work for other agencies in not only the Portland area, but the Pacific Northwest. And so provide, he provides a great perspective of best practices with other agencies as well. So before we get started, though, I just wanted to do a couple of quick things, just to give you a sense of what we're talking about here. And Sergey will go into it in more detail. But the ELO Tiger Water Partnership built a water treatment plant that came online back in 2016 that serves water to Lake Oswego and to Tigerd as a partnership. Within the city of Lake Oswego, and you'll see a map about this a little bit later on, there are also another, a number of other water districts and/or cooperatives that provide water to their own special areas, if you will. And some of those folks are within the city of Lake Oswego. There's about, give or take around 3,000 folks who get their water from another entity. Some of those are. Some of those are from wells, some of them are from Portland, getting their water from Portland. But what all of those other entities do as well is occasionally they, they have to buy water from us because particularly in the summertime, they can run out or get very low. So what we're talking about tonight is the water rates that apply to those entities that occasionally take water from us. And again, it's a very small amount. We'll talk about that in Sergey's presentation. He's got a lot of great details. And then our goal tonight again is to, at the end, we'll have a couple of alternatives for you to discuss and hopefully we can come back in either two to four weeks, depending on what we want to do there with a resolution to set those rates again, basically following the same thing we did back in 2019. I'm not sure, Councilor Whedon, you would have been on board then, right?
Yes.
So it's been a while, six years.
Have you excused? No, just kidding. I've seen this.
You've seen this before. It's new and improved.
Okay.
Yeah, and so then we'll have the responsibility of notifying all of those wholesale purchasers as to the pending rate change and then we would implement them and, and finance would do their, their work and their magic that they do every year in, in making those charges come to fruition. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sergey, who has a presentation and he'll be running his slideshow from his location. Sergey.
Great, thank you, Erica. And I just shared my screen. Can everybody hear and see the presentation okay?
Yes, Sergey, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Fantastic. Well, again, thank you for taking the time to meet with me this evening to talk to you about a water utility rate specifically related to wholesale rates. And just as a quick background, I have, I have been working with the city throughout the years, kind of going back. My first opportunity to work with the city was going back all the way to 2008, involved with the retail side of rates as well. So I had the pleasure of working with the city for quite some time. Now, before we get into the discussion today, just a quick overview, we're going to do a quick background regarding the prior touch point with the, with the previous council regarding these rates, kind of what we talked about. Then we'll talk about the methodology itself, kind of getting, getting into the, the rate setting process, what goes into it. And we'll actually talk about two alternatives. The conceptual methodology of setting rates will be the same, but the, the methods used to develop the, the alternatives are slightly different and we'll get into the discussion why and kind of give you an option to select an, an alternative. We're going to look at the existing way of doing things as well as a modified way of doing things and we'll, we'll cover why we are looking at the differences and then discuss any questions that may come from, from, from those, from that presentation. And then lastly, we'll, we'll dive into the results, focusing on both the existing methodology as well as the alternative methodology. Feel free to ask questions as we go through the presentation. There might be quite a few numbers as we get into it or some, or a little bit of detail. So do let me know if I'm either going too fast or if something's not making sense. But just as a quick background, when we typically look at developing and updating wholesale type rates, we usually perform what we call is, is a cost of service analysis where we want to make sure that the rates we're charging to our wholesale customers are cost based and only assessed based on the infrastructure that those customers are utilizing. Now, the last time we performed this study or a similar study such as this one was in 2019, at which point the big nexus or the, the launching point of the study was that we finally completed and booked all of our LO Tiger Partnership water treatment plan improvements onto the books. Typically, if you have ever seen wholesale studies or utility basis studies, you'll hear something called use of useful assets. And for, for wholesale type studies, the assets has to be fully completed and online for them to be included in these rates. So that was kind of the juncture where we finally had all the costing information included, finalized, and that's when the rates were updated to include that in the customer base of the rate recovery. Now, since that point, the rates have not been updated. So the, the new rate went into effect in 2020 and has remained flat since that time period. So as we know, most likely we have gone through some major periods of inflation since 2020, the, with everything going on, so the highest inflation we've seen. So none of those items have been accounted for or incorporated since then. Now, to give you a little bit of context, what, who our, our customers are, we currently have approximately six different connection points or customers. Two of them are with the city of Portland through the Arrowwood, East and West connections and Alto Park, city of Portland again. We have a River Grove connection at the east and west side and those two points are more emergency connections. They haven't really utilized us for water purchases in the last couple of years or five years or more, but we are available for them at any time to meet their demands. We also provide service to Skylands Water Company, Glenlory Cooperative and Lake Grove Water District, which is probably one of the bigger users of volume of water for, out of all the customers. Now, to give you context, what we're talking about, this is not a significant component of overall revenue for the water utility. If we look at strictly operating revenues, rate revenues make up the majority of those resources, but this does represent about 1% of annual revenues plus or minus, depending on the year, how warm the year is during the summertime. And the revenues that we generate could be around $200,000, it could be a little less, a little bit more. Again, it's very weather dependent. But sometimes a visual representation provides you a little bit of better understanding where the customers are located. So here we brought forward a quick map graphic of the city as well as the proximity of where some of these customers are located. So if we look at the top, we have Alto Park Water District on the left, we have Lake Grove Water District, down on the bottom right, River Grove, and on the right side, we have Glenlory and Skylands. And the reason why it's a good idea to know the layout of, of where the customers are located is again, because for wholesale rate setting, we typically only want to charge the customer for the infrastructure that they use from our system. So if a customer is closer to the point of delivery, the treatment plant is, I believe is on the bottom right for their way out there and we'll see in a second, then that customer will have less infrastructure that they're using and renting from us, so to speak, versus somebody who's all the way in the upper left portion of the graphics. So knowing the orientation and the infrastructure that they use is a fairly important component of developing these rates. So to give you kind of that idea, here's a sample GIS or geospatial kind of information of what infrastructure is being utilized by somebody like Lake Grove. This is just an example. It shows that they utilize the, the, the treatment plant, which is on the bottom right. The water gets pumped out of the treatment plant, going up the transmission line, which everybody benefits from, and it has to go around the lake and using various pump stations, using, touching various storage tanks until it finally gets to its destination. So when we're developing rates, we want to make sure they're, they're paying for that treatment plant, the transmission line, and a portion of the distribution system for the pipes, pumps, and storage tanks along the way, but only the ones that they use. Anything that they don't, don't use, we're going to try and, and attempt to exclude from the cost basis in the calculation. Now we'll switch gears and talk about just the conceptual methodology of rate setting and what goes into these type of studies. So when we talk about cost of service and cost of service studies, in general, there are three technical steps that are involved in developing a cost of service rate. The first step is what we usually refer to as the revenue requirement. And under this step, all we're trying to do is determine what is that amount of cost that we need to recover from our ongoing rates. And at this point, we're not really focusing on if it's retail revenue, is it wholesale revenue? We're just looking at what is the overall cost that we need to recover from our customers in general to meet our obligations. Once we have done that, we allocate those costs to our customer classes and systems. So you can think of it, we split the costs between wholesale and retail and within retail, there's a separate analysis that's done when you do a retail study versus a wholesale study, you focus primarily on those customers and their individual share of costs. Lastly, we developed actual rates that are assessed to these customers on a per unit basis, which could include a fixed charge depending on the meter size as well as a volume charge per unit of water such as 100 cubic feet or CCF. That's what we typically refer to in the water utility side. Now, when developing the first step, the revenue requirement, there's several approaches that are utilized to develop, develop the revenue requirement. You know, they're usually referred to either the utility basis and the, or the cash basis. And the primary difference between the two alternatives, again, it comes in with a, with a wholesale renter type of model versus an owner cash basis model. And the main difference is how to recover costs associated with capital. Under the utility basis, there, there's a clean dealing delineation formula, which includes all operating and maintenance expenses, just the general cost to operate the system, a recovery portion of annual depreciation. So as our assets are used up by the customers and the useful life is going down, they need to pay, be paying for that depreciation of those assets and that useful life and then a return on investment. So this is a concept of, for folks or utilities or customers that are renting capacity from our customers, they haven't paid an SDC and we'll kind of see that in a second. So they need to pay us for that risk of receiving service because they can leave at any time. So again, the, the utility basis, the renter model is a common approach for establishing wholesale or contract based rates that applies to customers that rent capacity from us or rent the system. They don't, they have not paid an SDC to connect, so they don't own a portion of the system. But it does create, and this approach creates a more linear or granular delineation of the infrastructure and the assets that are utilized. So here, under this approach, we try to look at exactly the infrastructure that is used by these customers versus under the cash basis, which is usually applied to the owners of the system, which is usually the retail customers that have paid an SDC. Here, the primary goal is to develop, you know, make sure that the customers are paying for the, or that are recovering the cost to operate the system and then an average cost is, is developed for a residential customer versus a commercial customer, irrigation customer, and so on. So here, the recovery occurs on a proportional basis without delineating specific individual line item asset that they utilize. So for our discussion purposes, we're going to focus on the utility basis and that is what we utilize to update the charges. Again, very consistent with prior updates. On the cost of service front, we go through several additional steps. Once we have established our revenue requirement, now we need to group our costs into types or what we call functions of service, such as supply treatment, storage, distribution, transmission, and so on. The reason why we do that is because not every customer utilizes every function of service or utilizes the same function in the same manner. So first we have to group our costs and in this case, we are including only the city's share of the partnership cost. We're not including the Tigerd share of partnership cost. We're only making sure that we're grouping and including costs that the city provides to the customers. Once we have grouped our costs into components and functions of service, we identify the facility utilization by wholesale customer and we'll show you the differences in a couple of slides, but here basically take a look at, out of the total pipe linear footage that we have on a system, what linear footage of pipe does our individual customer utilize? And that gives them a utilization adjustment to those functional unit costs. Then we develop usage profiles. So we take a look at multiple historical years and we do a multi-year average that can help us establish a trend in terms of what is an average take for these type of customers. Again, we want to avoid using one year of point in time information just because it could have been a hot summer or a cold summer. We want to avoid picking a peak or valley type of a year and utilize and develop a rate that is based on an average usage profile. And then lastly, we develop cost based in a cost by function that are then adjusted by the utilization factor and then aggregate them together to come up with our rate that we assess to our customers. So in general, we developed our requirement, we separate their requirement into functions of service, then divide them by the volume to get an average rate and then make adjustments based on how each customer utilizes our system. So for, as I mentioned in introduction for today, we're going to go over two approaches. Instead of just focusing on the existing method of cost allocation in the cost of service process, we're going to look at an alternative approach. And just to give you a heads up, why we're doing this is because historically, the city has not recognized in the development of the rates that some customers may use a system from a peaking perspective greater than others. And we'll, we'll show you an examples of why we're talking about it because in, just from a big picture perspective, a lot of your assets are oversized to be able to serve customers during the peak period of the year. And when those assets are built, they're, they're built a lot larger than if we were just sizing for average consumption because some customers may come in, they only use it to that level in the summertime during peak month, peak week, peak day, and then those assets are going to be underutilized the rest of the year. So the, the customers that have caused us to oversize those assets should proportionally contribute to the maintenance of those assets and eventual replacement of those assets. So with that, the current approach really focuses on just an average. So as I mentioned before, the costs are grouped into functions, the functions are divided by total volume of, of water and those average rates are adjusted simply for the utilization factor. No additional adjustment is made for the fact that some customers on the wholesale side might be peaking off of us a lot more than the system was designed for or a lot more than the typical retail customer. So the benefit of this historical approach, again, it's, it was easy to administer, it's easy to update or easier to update. It creates lower variability from, from year to year, from study to study, just because if you have significant peaking variability, you can have, you can, the, the rate itself can shift based on that. With having this approach, it keeps everything constant. And I think historically, again, I wasn't involved in the original development of this methodology, but I would say the conceptual side of things is that historically, this, because this is such a small proportion of our overall revenue, I'm not sure if a lot of attention was given at the impact of these changes. Now, the negative part of it, it does not fully recover the cost of providing service. It, it ignores the fact that customers are potentially peaking off of us. Now, the reason why we're focused on this is when we looked at historical usage, and I do understand there's a lot of numbers, so, so maybe if we can focus on a highlighted five-year average for both of the tables, it'll, it can kind of help us focus on the data. But we wanted to look at, how do our customers use the system compared to our retail system? So on the left side, the two tables show our winter months consumption and we define winter months as October through March. So we looked at the volumes for the retail system as well as the individual customers. And then the summer months, which we define as June through September, kind of the irrigating type of seasonally affected months of, from a water utility. And then we looked at the proportional share of total annual usage from each customer. And if we look at the five-year average to the, from this point to the right, we see that the retail system uses about 50% of water during the winter eight months period and then 50% of water during the summertime four month period. Now, when we compare that to the wholesale customers, the, the, the most customer that resembles the retail system is the Arrowwood connection at the east and west side at 44% in the wintertime and 56% in the summertime. On the opposite end of the spectrum, we have somebody like Skylands, who's 5% in the five-year average utilizes us during the wintertime and 95% of usage is occurring during the summertime. So they're predominantly using this infrastructure in the system when the, the resources are constrained and are stretched to the highest capacity. So in general, just the trend we are finding is that on a, all customers, wholesale customers except River Grove, which hasn't used water and drawn water in at least five years, are predominantly using, utilizing the city for summer peak usage. Now, the alternative method, which is basically consistent with just general, you, you cost of service practices, this is consistent with how the retail rates were set back earlier on, various years ago when the last cost of service was updated. This is consistent with more common allocation approaches. And the additional step that we perform with this alternative method versus the existing method is once the groups have been functionalized into functions of service, within each function, we break down the cost between cost related for base or average usage conditions, peak conditions, oversizing for peaking, fire related proportional costs, because there are costs associated with simply providing fire protection and not every, every customer receives fire protection services, meter services, and then accounting fixed type costs. So this adds an extra layer of perplexity by further granulating the costs into additional cost pools within each function. I know that's a whole mouthful, so I apologize for the, for the detail, but what we're doing here is trying to isolate what costs within each function are tied to peaking and those costs are allocated based on each customer's individual peaking factor that we have calculated using historical data. So the benefit of, of this approach, it helps us move towards traditional cost of service rate setting principles and helps align with costization principles and really accounts for the unique characteristics of each wholesale customer. The negative part is that it is more complex. It takes a bit longer time to update these type of fees and it couldn't create a little bit of volatility if the behavior patterns change from our customers. So if somebody was a peaker, they get a price signal, they reduce peaking, I guess that's the intended. So if somebody was a peaker, they get a price signal, they reduce peaking, I guess that's the intended uh impact of the structure. But there could be volatility from study to study, update to update, if there are significant changes in behavior. Now, uh in addition to that, the first time you make this change, there will be additional impacts to some customers who are heavier uh peekers of the system. Than under the current approach. So that's the methodology. Now let's take a look at some specific numbers that we have calculated. So starting with that first step. Actual revenue requirement, when we developed and forecasted the test year period, which is uh for the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We utilize historical data and a approximately three percent or so uh uh inflation factor to estimate. The fiscal year twenty-six operating and maintenance expenses that are eligible to the 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 like uh we go side of costs. So again, we're netting out anything related to uh Tiger portion of the partnership of our costs who are operating and maintaining the system. That was estimated about six point two million dollars. Annual depreciation, net of contributions or donations was about three point two. And return on investment, that's the concept of renting our facilities, our in- infrastructure was approximately seven point four million. So overall. Our revenue requirement from the utility perspective, utility basis perspective was about sixteen point nine million dollars. That's the amount we need to recover as a whole. Next, we wanted to take a look at our utilization factors. So this is where we take a look at what portion of our infrastructure do these customers use? And what portion do we need to adjust for? So reviewing our prior work as well as discussions and confirmations with staff today. We confirmed that all customers, retail, wholesale, everybody benefits from the treatment plant. So all the infrastructure, which is which increased substantially uh in the during the prior update, associated with supply treatment. Raw water, clear well, and so on. Uh and a transmission line are included in the cost basis to the full extent. So everybody benefits from these uh assets and this infrastructure, and mo- all of it will be recovered proportionally. Now, on the distribution side, we separated the infra- infrastructure into three distribution related components. The first one is associated with the with distribution pumping. When we looked at the the mapping information and talked to your staff in terms of what uh pu- which pump stations each customer used, we basically looked at. Uh only the benefiting pump station by customer. So you'll notice it's a varying degree depending on the connection. Arrowwood, eastern west. Touches the most pump stations, so they utilize sixty seventy-six percent of pumping capacity on our system. So we are adjusting anything in this cost bucket of pumping down to sixty seventy-six percent, so a twenty-four percent reduction of their costs. For pumping. You look at somebody like Skylands, because they're closer to the treatment plant. They're only utilizing about twenty percent rounding up here of the pumping capacity. So their costs are reduced by eighty percent, and they're only paying twenty percent of the distribution pumping related costs. So this is how the waitings are done for pumping. We go through the same information and analysis for the pipeline. So your staff was able to update and provide us new uh linear footage of the pipe that that each customer benefits from versus the total linear footage. On the system, and then similarly, the storage tanks that each customer utilizes along the way to their connection. So these three uh categories and the under the distribution second function of service get a waiting adjustment for these customers. Lastly, before we develop unit costs, we actually look at historical consumption. So we reviewed five years of usage and production data. And in total, retail and wholesale systems net of Tiger's share of of production is has been about two point three million CCF. On an annual basis. So this formed the denominator for our calculation. We also took a look at the peaking factors, kind of utilizing the seasonalities of uh average month versus uh peak summer or summer month. Uh average summer month in this case, and we found that for the the combined system, it was about one point five factor. For the for that uh with uh summer season versus annual average month. So in this case, uh one point five was a system-wide average versus each individual customer. Peaked a little bit more. At the lowest end, Arrowwood peaked at about one point seven times. Uh versus the highest point, Skylands peaked at about two point eight times. So again, reiterating the fact that. Uh they are using us predominantly for their summer peak use period. Next, we went on to develop the unit costs. Now, this is focusing under uh on the existing methodology. So here. The average cost for water is simply taking the sixteen point eight million, dividing it by the two point three million CCF. Resulting in an average cost of wa- of water per unit of about seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, Sergey, can I ask you a question? How many more, how many more slides are there?
Oh, sorry about that. Uh I would say maybe ten-ish. Did you want me to speed it up?
Maybe get, yeah, I mean, this is all very detailed, um but if um I don't know if we need to to quite. Go into this level of.
Oh, not a problem. Apologize for the information.
Let's yeah, maybe just cut to the cut to the conclusion.
Uh uh that's fantastic.
But we do appreciate your thorough presentation.
Oh, and not a problem. So the average cost of water seven twenty-one, when we perform the the analysis under the existing methodology. Uh on this slide, you'll see and apply the utilization factors. You'll see the updated rates would range from. Four seventy-nine for River Grove or so, four eighty up to five thirty-three. If you annualize the increases, it's about one point seven to two point four percent annualized increases. So this is compounding uh included. So under the existing approach, a customer would not see more than two and a half percent. Uh annualized average increase, which is, I believe, below the cost of inflation, but this is staying consistent with approaches. So that's option one. Option two, where we dive a little bit deeper, we bifurcate the adjustment between base and peak. And the increased rate goes up to five dollars. So the annualized rate is anywhere from three percent up to eight percent per year over the last six years. Uh so it's between the last time the rate was adopted and the the proposed rate. So you I I created an additional slide which compared the two. And really, the focus is between the upper table, which represents the uh original methodology updated. For simply in- infrastructure and operating costs with that. A volume rate increase of about two percent or so on average by customer versus the. Uh alternative approach, which bumps it up and really focuses on accounting for peaking. Where our average increase could be as high as five to eight percent for our customers and as low as three percent. So again, if we, the the big question is, do I count for peaking or do we stay with the old method? Is the big conceptual question to counsel. There are, before I finish up, there are a couple of other considerations we're proposing. Uh historically, because of the timing of the interlocal agreements. Uh that some of the agreements are not consistent between each other, just because of the time when they were developed. So. Staff would like to go through and standardize the agreements with every customer, and to avoid having this lag of these updates. The another recommendation is to implement an annual inflation adjustment effective of July first of every year, kind of with the beginning of fiscal year. Tied to an accredited inflationary index. So really, the guidance we're looking for is. What are your thoughts on the methodology? Stay with the current approach, which is around two percent adjustment versus per year annualized. Uh versus uh moving to the modified allocation methodology, which looks at peaking differentiation and really. Making sure that customers that peek off of us are paying more, and the highest increase here is annualized average of about eight percent. Per year over the last six years. So it does compound quite a bit. Uh and then guidance on the the annual inflationary factors, if you're okay with moving that route of including. Uh an automatic clause to escalate cost to account for inflation.
Thank you, Sergey. That's that's great. That sums it up nicely. So Nick, I said, the peaking rate, is it that's just one rate? It's a one blended, kind of one blended rate. It's not just like a rate during the peak time?
No, it's exactly. It's it's all usage throughout the uh throughout the year, and it accounts for. The the fact that the customer is peaking on us. So in this case, uh the customer, in this case, the Skylands would have the highest rate in here. They'll pay it for all usage year round.
And just for for context, what what do our residents pay per CCF?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'm looking right here at the um the rates right now, and it it's a tiered rate situation. So if you. Um use between zero and eight CCFs, it's three point two seven per CCF, and it goes up to as much as um eight point four eight. Per CCF.
Yeah, that's.
Our base rate is really high.
Yeah.
Well.
Like eighty dollars a month.
They have a base rate as well, as you can see up there.
We don't charge them.
Yes.
Yes, they have their own. So this is just, okay, well, that that is helpful, because there there's no um tiered rate. This is just a flat rate.
But the the base rate that you're seeing there for what we charge the the bulk water customers, it isn't like our. Base rate, it's strictly just the cost of our meters. The meters are like ten grand, and so we tried to recoup those over a twenty-year period, so.
Right, it's not all the infrastructure.
So it really isn't a fixed rate like the two hundred dollar meters we put in our.
We are trying to incorporate that into this rate.
No.
Maybe that got lost in the cash basis versus the utility basis, but is that what we're trying to, no?
No, I think that what we're trying to account for is the fact that our infrastructure is oversized uh for the peak. And because these customers are using the majority of their uh water in the summertime, we wanna charge them for the. For the uh the size of the infrastructure, we have to deliver that much water in the summer as opposed to their average. I mean, in the in the wintertime, we use maybe half, a third of the water.
Yeah.
That we use in the summertime. So our pipes and our and our pump stations and our reservoirs have to be much larger. Because we all and we all do it. So it's not just these customers. We all consume more water when we need to irrigate our yards.
Right. Um I'm all for the peaking, peaking.
If I, if I may.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry about that.
You've done a great job, Sergey, of really exhibiting. Your attention to detail and experience and skill set in this area. So congratulations. However, I think this is a good example of knowing your audience, and you've obviously at least. Talked way over my head, like I didn't really.
You're our finance guy, man.
That's a long time ago. Um so I, at least for me, and I can't speak for the other counselors on the on the dice here, but. I guess I'm looking to you you two on what your recommendation is. I I after slide three, I just kind of like passed out, so um. Not because the information is wrong, but just I think it was way over my head. So I would love to hear just a couple of sentences from you, what you recommend we do.
Like I guess it it fundamentally comes down, do you believe that the customer should be paying for the oversize of the pipes? I mean, it's it's a very simple concept. It's just, yes, or versus, everything is equal and. They shouldn't be paying their fair share of us oversizing the pipes.
Who's for peaking? Peaking, peaking. Oh, before you can get there? Okay, we're almost there to peaking.
Directors, how do we charge Tiger? Is that based on the system size or based on the volume they use?
Theirs is completely different. Theirs is based on, they are a partner. So they pay, they've already paid for their capital.
Yes.
They paid, you know, we paid a mil- hundred million, they paid a hundred fifty million for the capital of the infrastructure building it. And now, on the operational part of it, they pay their portion of, we know how much is produced. And we have two meters over there, so we know how much they pulled. So they take their per rad amount of the operating costs of the plant, the intake, everything.
Got it.
On a yearly basis.
And they and then, yeah, and they.
And the difference between these two methodologies are two hundred thousand dollars? I think I, on the first page or second page, you said.
Here.
The difference in cost is about sixty thousand dollars between the method one versus method two.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Right, difference in revenue, potential revenue.
On a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Okay. At the, excuse me for misreading that. So we're talking about sixty thousand dollar difference. And an average of difference per household is how much? I know we don't have that, maybe not have that.
We don't know, and we can't know, because each one of these water districts sets their own rates.
Yeah.
In other words, it. And each one of them provides a total, uh our our portion of their water is different based on the utilities. So there's actually no way for us to calculate what the impact on, say, a Skylands water customer would be.
Okay. What's going on through my mind is when we installed these systems, oversized system. Was the intent for our own expansion of those areas, or was it? Sell more water to retailers?
So the ultimate goal of the of the uh water treatment plant is that eventually all of those become our retail customers. Our master planning efforts and the sizing of those facilities was based on every uh uh go back to that map. Everybody within the urban services boundary is eventually going to be our responsibility to serve. As a typical retail customer. So when that happens, is it ten years from now, is it twenty years from now, thirty? Don't know, but we planned for everything in that blue outline. And within, actually, all the way from I five to to the to the um river. Willamette River is within the urban services boundary. So that's how we built the system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council African. Council move. Oh, same questions? Okay. Okay, so do we have consensus on the the peaking? I see at least a majority, and then adjusting for inflation, like we do with all the rates.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, right? Yeah, okay. Wonderful. Look at that.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll, we'll come back to you in two to four weeks with a resolution that identifies that specifically, puts those rates in using the alternative. Methodology that incorporates peaking into that.
So we haven't been using that that methodology thus far. That's not the, no.
Correct.
And we haven't done any inflation?
No.
Correct. And and I will put a small caveat there. I I need to, we have different IGAs with each one of them. Um going back to the sixties, uh some of them are in the sixties and seventies, eighties, and I need to see if we have the ability to do. The inflationary each year, or each year we have to tell them we're upping it again, raising it again. We have a couple of different ways we might be able to do that.
And Eric, if we do that, we'll do that as part of master fees and charges, right? We won't create a separate process for that.
Hopefully not. We will have to notify them every year, but we, that's administrative that we could probably take care of.
The wholesale rates in master fees and. Oh, they're not.
They're not, no.
Why it's a separate, okay.
But I think we need a thorough presentation on every.
No, we do appreciate the good, the thorough list. Um he's just doing what he was asked to do.
It's, yes, it's, there's a lot to it, and it's.
It's your world, Sergey, and we love that you're the expert in this because we're not.
We are grateful, we are grateful for that service.
I am so glad that you're looking at this stuff.
Oh, no problem. I just wanna make sure you guys are getting what you need.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I understood every, every page.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, absolutely.
Okay, okay, um information from council.
Oh, the DC.
Wants to give the DC wrap up?
Yeah. So I was with my friend John, DC.
We had a blast.
Oh, and my friend.
Rachel.
Rachel and the mayor.
Joe.
Joe and the kids, the most important, our children, our students were outstanding. They were queen. And Kim, they deserve really, you know, a round of applause. They're wonderful. They, you know, did. Great work with the kids. And you know, honestly, the mothering that. Kim was doing with the kids when they were sick or they were, it was like parents who would have seen that, they would be very happy. How their kids were cared, you know. And the mayor made me walk thirty-five thousand steps.
Yeah, that was a good day.
That's a good day.
Yeah, we did, we get, and you know, we had fun, you know, the. John was the most prestigious, you know, I as a teacher, I rate him as the most prestigious who went to check the things and.
Well, I just wanna say that our students were a exceptional reflection of of our community. I mean, just knocked out of the park. Um uh and uh and the Hill Day was interesting. It was just with all the chaos going on in Washington, it was interesting to hear different viewpoints and um and then because it. It it, there's a change in power, um people are still trying to figure out where they are. And um it was pretty hilarious, actually. I mean, if you walked out of there, you would think in many ways that the world is going to end. Maybe next week, maybe the following week at the last part, and and then other people are going. Hey, you know, we had a both both aisles saying, uh hey, I've been working on six projects with my colleagues. From both sides of the aisle, and we're just getting stuff done, and we have lots of committee meetings and and it was, you know, and we're. We're just getting stuff done, and we have lots of committee meetings, and and it was, you know, and we're we're getting stuff done, and you know, in their particular areas, so. You you hear the spin meisters that the world is falling versus the people who are there to get stuff done, and it was nice to hear. The people that that are there that are actually going to committee meetings, advocating for, you know, good legislation, um and. Uh so that was some hope, but I will say, it's so delightful to be on a city council that just works on solving problems. Um I I have to say, the um rhetoric and the BS that goes on in Washington. Uh they should, they should move it to like Lincoln, Nebraska or somewhere and just start over, but whatever, so, but we had a good time.
Yes, and I I forget, I forget that I did my training as a spy and my, yes, and my code, I can give you my code. Salamander.
Now everyone has.
Yeah, no, because, no, no, it's a, no, 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 it's a spy trick. It's a spy trick, I gave you.
A clue.
Yeah, that's a trick. But I did great, I received my email, my mission was perfect, I caught the people I needed to catch. Great, yeah.
Great, worthwhile.
Fifty-five minutes hanging, I beat the record.
Well, that, oh yeah, that fifty seconds.
Fifty seconds. Or ask, ask him how many second everyone would do.
We were the top two.
The mayor and I were the top.
We were, no one was even close.
Yep, seven second, ten, you know.
We really showed them up.
Yeah.
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 Well, it was more complicated than that, it wasn't just a regular bar, it was big and it was slippery and it moved.
It was, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't a pull pull bar, we could have done.
John and I weren't there, so, you know, it could have been totally different.
The average would have maybe perhaps gone down.
Exactly.
All right, anyone else? Any other updates? Okay.
I have a couple, um first of all, Madison sent us uh you all an email just while you were in this meeting, letting you know that. A Senate Bill nine sixteen is actually going to come out of committee this week, and then will be headed to the Senate floor, so if you do want to contact Senator Wagner. Now is the time uh to talk with him, that's the bill that uh pays unemployment benefits when employees on strike.
For two weeks.
After two weeks, they'd be on strike unpaid for two weeks, and if they were on strike longer than two weeks, then they could claim unemployment benefits. It does severely change the balance of power, in addition to being a very challenging financial thing for any public. Agency, it severely changes what happens at the table, and I will say, we have an awesome working relationship with AFME, so I would. I would just hate to have either party in that position.
Right.
Um the other thing is, I noticed that you've had a really diverse meeting tonight, you had the library, you had some planning stuff, you had an appeal, you had some. Quite a long presentation about public works, um uh so I need to give some kudos to our public safety departments today. Uh first of all, big shout out to a a brand-new officer who I think might have just come out of field training, Randy Lay, who. Uh actually captured some folks who were tagging electrical boxes, they were spraying graffiti on electrical boxes, and he he caught them on foot. So, uh next time you see Randy, please tell him congratulations, it was some really awesome police work, and no one was hurt, which is even more awesome police work. Uh second, I want to give a shout out to the fire department yesterday for responding to a gas line issue at the Chick-fil-A uh construction crews was uh. Closed, so not only did they um, not only did they help uh Chick-fil-A solve the problem, but they also made sure we can all someday get a chicken sandwich in this town. Although I'm sure you can get one at Goobanks.
Chicken, we have chicken.
Yeah, I thought so, um and then, uh last but not least, um this morning, LOPD also responded to a call at the Albertson's parking lot. Um from a suspect who was actually quite dangerous, and uh so big shout out to LOPD for. It was sometime this morning about, I want to say about, it was about the time she was showing up to my office around nine-thirty-ish in the morning. The al- only Albertsons we have in Lake Oswego, and. Yeah, and um also shout out to Chase, who was instrumental in apprehending the suspect, so thank you, police dog, but thank you, LOF. Uh PD, so I thought you'd all be interested in that, and then last but not least, I'll be in Vancouver, Washington, not the good Vancouver. The good Vancouver, the second-best Vancouver on the West Coast. Um for the Northwest Regional Managers Meeting tomorrow and Thursday, I'll be back in the afternoon on Friday. Megan will be pro tem tomorrow, and then Erica will be pro tem on Thursday, please do not take advantage of Erica, although she was threatening to sign a bunch of contracts while she's pro tem. So I guess if you want something to be built, Thursday is the day to ask, anyway, anyway, give me a call if you need anything, but I'll be back Friday. Anyway, actually, I'll be back Thursday night for the Budget Committee meeting, I'll see you all there.
Yes, Thursday night Budget meeting, yeah, still free, okay, thank you, everyone, we're joined.
Yeah, a guy had stolen a car.